Okay, we're going to come back to session. We're going to have our final committee, which is committee the whole this afternoon for Bellingham City Council. It's actually either a long agenda for this afternoon and let members of the public know we've had a third item added to our executive session as well, another 15 minutes on to that. We'll go straight to our first item, which is a resolution authorizing a second PEG channel for the purpose of transmitting Bellingham Television, BTV, in both standard definition and high-definition television to Comcast subscribers. PEG, by the way, stands for Public Educational and Government Channels. Shall we go ahead and say it to you, Marty?
Sure. My name is Marty Mulholland. I'm the IT Director, and with me is James Herb, Senior Attorney, who assists us on these franchise agreements. I believe you're a senior attorney, senior assistant. Okay, I'm correct. So I'd just make a few points. I believe most of the materials are fairly self-explanatory, and we have been working with councilmembers Barker and Knutson as our, the franchise working group on this as well. One question I get quite often is what is a franchise agreement and what does it do? And our franchise agreement with Comcast only addresses cable television services. The city does not have the opportunity to regulate or influence other services such as Internet or telephone. So this franchise, when we refer to that, only addresses cable television. You answered the question about PEG. One other definition related to PEG channels and why we have those in our agreement, it's a provision that allows us to have local, non-commercial programming. And as we state in the materials, our franchise agreement allows for three channels, and we're currently only using one of those channels for Bellingham TV. The resolution before you would use a second of the three channels and transmit BTV in both standard definition on Channel 10 to the community, and would also transmit BTV in high-definition on a new channel number that we don't know to Comcast subscribers as well. Comcast would be required to make that HD channel available within 90 days of your action if you approve this resolution. We're available to answer questions.
Councilmembers.
I believe that we passed the resolution.
We have a motion and a second. Pinky?
A quick question. So to go to high-definition, our cameras and our equipment currently doesn't even provide that. So, and this says there's no fiscal impact to the city, but in order to provide this, don't we need the equipment?
Oh, thank you. Wasn't as clear perhaps as I thought it was in that memo. We have been working, as we replace equipment, for quite a few years now to make sure it was HD-ready. So our equipment is ready to go to transmit an HD-quality video to Comcast. Even in this room? Even in this room. In fact, my understanding is it's hard to...
I've seen our cameras.
It's actually challenging even to buy cameras that aren't HD-ready, but this was something we knew might be coming for some time, and so bit by bit, as we've replaced equipment, we've been buying equipment that was HD-ready.
We don't want close-ups, by the way. Terry, and then April?
Well, yeah, as much as I don't think the public needs to see us in high-definition, I will move the resolution. Oh, you did? Okay, Mr.?
April?
Okay, well, I want to thank you because I do think it's important that we keep the standard. There's a lot of people that just want to have cable with the basic television. They don't want the high-definition, even though all the TVs at home do it now. But I think in doing this, it's really important, as we move forward with other franchise agreements, to really show that we kind of value the equity in that, ensuring that we will always have something on those base, in that base package, but then for those that want to pay more and have the opportunity or the privilege to have that. So, thank you, and I'll be supporting this as well.
Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion, which is to, resolution ordinance, to pass a resolution authorizing the use of a second PEG channel for high-definition broadcast. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Marty. We go on to the next item. Several have to do with Public Works. The first one is an update on city-owned fiber network. The city of Bellingham began building a fiber-optic network of its own in the mid-1980s to connect and communicate with remote utilities, remote assets, traffic signals, cameras, radio towers, municipal buildings. The city has also partnered with other governmental agencies on the construction of a fiber network, and access to the network is restricted to those public agencies which have helped build out the network. Given recent interest in expanding the use of the city-owned fiber, staff is bringing this item forward for information and discussion. As, by way of comment, the city council has already asked our legislative policy analyst to look into the issue of public broadband and open-access networks, but right now we hear a briefing from our Public Works Director about our current network. Ted?
Thank you, Ted Carlson, Public Works Department. As Council President Lillicust mentioned, this item is for information-only. Mark is working on the broader issue, as was just suggested, that has to do with public broadband as a whole, and the Community Development Department is also working on a project looking at fiber availability as it relates to business and economic development. So this item is really a bit of a historical update on the city's own, the city's fiber network that was installed by city, used by the city and other governmental agencies for general operations. There's a memo in your packet that provides some of that background, and I'll just quickly go over some of it and certainly can answer any questions that the council might have. The city started installing fiber back in the mid-1980s. Really, originally, it was used to communicate with remote utility locations, so our pump stations, lift stations, and really it was an operational improvement. Previously, that communication was done by radio or satellite. The fiber certainly allowed for better communication, and as you know, nowadays, we operate both water treatment plant, the wastewater treatment plant, and about 60 remote locations, all from postpoint with one operator, using the SCADA system telemetry, much of which runs over the city-installed fiber. So originally, it was put in by the sewer and water utility, paid for by the utilities, and over time, the system expanded to include our traffic signals, security cameras, and ultimately connections to municipal buildings. And this kind of really transitioned from being a utility operation to a general public works operation run by our traffic division or group. And as was mentioned in the summary statement, we have partnered with other government agencies. In the early 2000s, we worked with the school district through some inter-local agreements, so we had formal agreements with the school district to build on the city's fiber network and make connections to the school district's administrative building and some of the actual elementary schools and other schools throughout the district. And over time, we've worked with the Port, WTA, WashDOT, Department of Transportation, Western, building and leveraging on that public fiber system, and all of those agencies use the city's network. They generally take care of the system in their building, and most of the fiber in the right-of-way is owned and maintained by the city. And so it's really served the city and the partner agencies very well. A lot of the systems that we run require that fiber, that high-performance fiber, and it has saved the city quite a bit of money over the years not having to buy that service from the private communication companies, and it has really worked out very well. And from time to time, we do get requests from either private communication companies or, more recently, as the discussion of community broadband has started to come up throughout the country, requests from private citizens to make that public-owned and maintained fiber available, either through agreements with private carriers or directly to commercial or retail customers. And one of the challenges with that is, as we built the network, it was really never intended to be used for commercial or retail services, and what that really entails is it doesn't have the resiliency and redundancy that we would have built if we knew we were going to provide it to private or commercial use. We do have breaks in the system from time to time. In fact, this year, we've had four breaks in the fiber system that are associated with development, contractor hits a fiber, tears it up, and the system goes down. And we don't have crews necessarily to replace that, so it's all done via contract. It takes some time, and the fiber can be down for several days. We've built in some contingencies in our system to be able to deal with that. If we have to send someone up to the water plant or send staff out to look at the remote sites, we can do that, but that's really not a level of service that would be acceptable to people that are paying for a commercial or retail service. They would certainly want to have much more reliability than that. And so if we ever work to get into a situation where we contracted or leased the fiber, quite a bit of work would need to be done to look at the network, inventory the network. That's another challenge that we have, is the system was really built out over time, really being opportunistic and throwing fiber in the ground when we're doing a water main project or sewer main project or any other type of capital project where we just took the opportunity, as the street was opened up, to put in conduit, put in fiber. In addition, we did use existing streetlight conduit, but it was all done without the benefit of an overarching plan. So we really just took the opportunity to put the fiber in where we needed it, where we could, and we don't necessarily have a great inventory of what's in the ground and certainly the associated capacity. So when we started thinking about whether or not it would, it would work well to provide open access to our fiber, there's quite a bit of work that would need to be done, both the inventory, what's in the ground, as well as understand the capacity, understand what would need to be done from a resiliency perspective, understand what a capital replacement program might look like, as well as operation and maintenance-type needs. That, right now, we take care of it when we can, and it works well for our uses, but again, it's a different standard if you're talking about opening it up to the public where the expectation would be, just like the expectation is with water, that it always works and it's there when you need it. We would need to put a lot more into the system. So we wanted to provide a little bit of that background. There's another component in that the city, back in 2000, in the 2000s, purchased some fiber from the public utility district. And in the early 2000s, the utility, the PUD actually did attempt a public fiber system, so to speak, where they were going to construct the fiber and then provide that fiber service on the retail market and commercial market. Ultimately, that didn't work out for them. They weren't able to get enough customers to support the operation. They intended to run it like an enterprise, like a utility, where the rates would pay for the service and the capital needs and the ongoing operation and maintenance, and over time, that model didn't work for the PUD. The competition from the private market was intense, and they just couldn't get the customer base that they needed to operate the utility. So they sold their fiber to the city, and at the time, there was an agreement between the city and the PUD commissioners. The city purchased the fiber at a reduced purchase price, but with the agreement that we would not compete on the private market, that the fiber that we purchased would be only for public use. So that adds another complication if the city was to open up the fiber network for private use. That specific fiber purchase from the PUD would have to be really taken out of that equation. We'd need to either build new fiber or come up with another way to get around the fact that that particular, it's about 16 miles of fiber, is not intended for private use. So today, I just wanted to give a little bit of background because there's been a lot of discussion about, you know, we have this asset, and the city should just open up the asset to private use. It's already there. It's already been paid for. I think one thing to think about is that there would be a significant amount of planning and probably investment in the system to make it ready for private use. Doesn't mean that we can't do that. I just think maybe based on whatever comes out of Mark's analysis and also the analysis done by community and economic development study from planning, we can revisit the use of the city's network, but it would come at a cost. So it's very brief. I know, and there's a lot of information in the packet that I didn't touch on, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Councilmembers. Okay, well, I'm one of the people who's interested in looking at the idea of open-access networks, public-owned open-access networks. I want to make it clear, I'm not interested in the city becoming a retail-level Internet service provider. We'd work, if anything, in my mind, through intermediaries, so I don't know if we need a level of reliability if we were actually the ISP ourself. I do have two questions. One had to do with the PUD fiber. As you say, that PUD fiber came with agreement. It wouldn't be open to the public. Can we potentially renegotiate that? The PUD would allow it? They could agree to allow it, couldn't they?
Yeah, I think that that would take some negotiation between the city and the PUD. The agreement, the purchase-and-sale agreement that went along with that fiber was pretty clear, but it doesn't mean that it couldn't be revisited.
Right, but no uncertainty there?
No.
Yeah, okay. And the other thing is, you say we put down fiber kind of as the opportunity arises. What size fiber do we put down? And can you speak in layman's terms, in terms of capacity? How much do we overbuild our network? And, you know, you can put a lot of bandwidth through a teeny-teeny fiber. What size are we talking about?
Well, what we generally do is put the conduit in, and that's the most important thing, that we're putting the conduit in while the streets opened up. And then to the number of strands or the amount of capacity that we put in, I'd have to have Clark get back to you, but we put in more than we need, knowing that there's going to be future use. But one of the challenges is it's not just the city that's been using that fiber. Oftentimes, it's shared with the Port, the school district, or WTA. And so, like I said, I think before we could move forward with too much discussion about opening up access to the system, we would have to map and inventory our system, including understanding the capacity that's available, and we're in the process of doing that. That is a project that's underway. We just haven't completed the effort yet.
Do you have a councilmembers? April?
You mentioned it like a utility, like water, and we know that when water goes down, it's a lot of pressure on the city to make sure that that water gets back, and sometimes that can impact people's businesses, and that opens up a whole 'nother bag, I guess. So if we have open access and it's the city's responsibility to make sure, and somebody digs and hits it, I mean, how does that work in other communities? That's the city, in that moment, that becomes a priority for the city to get back up and running like it does with water?
Yeah, that's a good question. I think those are the details that would be worked out in the agreements between whoever's accessing the fiber, so the fiber access agreement would have to come with reliability guarantees and who's responsible for replacing the fiber, fixing the fiber when it goes down, some type of conditions and criteria about how long it can be down and what the impacts would be. From what I've seen, looking at other communities and that are looking at community fiber, I think it would be very difficult for the city, given our existing system, to run it like a utility where it's fees-for-service. It would certainly be, it's possible to do this, but my guess is it would be more of a general governmental service funded by the general fund, general taxes, rather than fees-for-service, because like any utility, it comes down to the customer base versus the ongoing capital, infrastructure needs, and ongoing operation and maintenance costs. And just from our, looking at our system and looking around the country, I think it's unlikely that fees-for-service would pay for this. It would more likely be a service that competes with other general fund services.
I guess I'm viewing it sort of like our water service. We have retail customers, but we also have wholesale water service. It's more like that. If it's made available at all, it's made available kind of with a low level of service, but that may not even happen. Kelly, you had some comments?
Just a couple, and Ted just brought one of them up, and these are just ideas, issues that maybe the council would want to consider before they give the administration any direction about how to proceed. The first one is, you know, we have not been, at this point in time, looking for new lines of business, and one of the reasons that we would do it is because there was lack of accessibility, and I guess the, my experience with the PUD, when they started theirs, Ted, you can correct me, when I was on the EDI board, was they wanted to extend fiber out to North County where there isn't access to fiber. So it wasn't like in Bellingham where there are two, three, four different providers available. It was out in the rural areas where there wasn't any. And so I think for you to consider is, is it an issue of accessibility or is it an issue of cost? And yes, having access to fiber is very important for just the average person, because that's how things are happening now. On the other hand, there, we might want to explore the cost factor with the franchise, not franchises for that, but the other companies, before we take on a new, either a new utility or a new level of service, which we are going to have to pay for along with all the other things that we all discussed on Saturday. So if it was simple or not impactful financially, it would be a lot more attractive to me, but neither one of those things, I believe, is true.
Terry?
Yeah, I was the other one on the council under the Public Works Committee that brought up about wanting to explore, to look at this idea. So I look forward to getting Mark's fuller report and then having a fuller discussion on the issue.
Right, okay, but thank you for this update on the current state of our city-owned fiber network. This is for information-only. We'll go on to the next item, which is city council review of a public works director's decision denying a request for retail water service and sewer service at 1323 Mount Baker Highway. The owners of that property have requested the city council to review the public works director's decision to deny the request for expansion of water and sewer service to serve or post 24-unit subdivision. Under our code, that request is reviewed by the director. If the director denies it, the property owner has the right to appeal to the city council, and that's what we're doing right now. Ted, you'd like to start with this?
Yeah, I'll kick it off. Ted Carlson, Public Works Department, along with Brent Baldwin. Brent just put up an area map on the overhead to get council-oriented to where this is at. This property is outside the city limits. It is within the city's UGA, right along Mount Baker Highway. As you can see, there's Britton Road, intersection of Mount Baker Highway, to get you oriented to where we're at. And as Michael mentioned, when we get a request for water and sewer service outside the city limits, Bellingham Municipal Code gives us guidance on how we treat that. The code is very clear that the city no longer extends its water and sewer service outside the city limits. We don't extend the service. We don't add new customers. In this case, the services are already there. They're adjacent to the property, but when the utility service zones were repealed, if someone did not have a contract for service or did not come in and get a contract for service, the city would no longer hold itself out for water and sewer utility service. There is one exception in the code, and we brought that before council in other circumstances. It's a public safety, public health exception. Generally, that has to do with a customer that is not on the sewer but does have water service, and they had a failed septic, and will bring something forward to the council to say, "Septic has failed. The Health Department has requested that the property hooks up to the city's adjacent sewer main," and that's the one exception where the staff may recommend providing service outside the city limits. More generally, the guidance from the code is that until an area is annexed into the city limits, we do not serve them with water and sewer. In this particular case, this property does have a water connection. It's a water connection for one single-family home. It was originally part of the Van Wick Water Association. When the city annexed the Van Wick Water Association, we entered into a contract for service with this property for one single-family service to the single-family residents. And again, the code is, in our mind, very clear that any property outside the city limits, even existing customers cannot expand the service, can't subdivide, can't request larger service, can't expand in any way. So that's the Public Works Department's decision. The decision is to deny the request. We work closely with the city attorney on this. We notified the applicant that the department is denying the request, and certainly they have the ability to appeal that decision to the city council, and that's why we're here today. I know the applicant is here and has requested to speak today during the work session, which we have done in the past. We've allowed applicant to speak, or the council has, I should say. I talked a little bit with Council President Lillicust about that, and I believe he's agreed to let applicant speak for a brief period of time. So we'd be happy to answer any other questions. Alan is here as well and can speak to some of the specifics if you would like, but if you have any questions of us before we ask council if the applicant can speak, I'd be happy to answer those.
Okay, so I will be inviting a representative for the applicant to come up, but I think Councilor Vargis got something to say first?
Yeah, I did. So since I've been on city council, one of the things that has been the hardest is whenever it has to do with water issues. And I'm a little biased because I grew up on a farm that we didn't have running water, and we had to go to well to get water. So every time it comes to us refusing someone to give water, I know what that actually feels like. And in this particular incidence, if we were just looking at something that had absolutely no history involved with it, I would say, yes, this makes sense. This is our municipal code, and I understand why Public Works is suggesting we deny it. However, if you look at the history of this particular piece of property and what we have done as a city together, it feels like there's no common sense in this decision, and I know that that is not Public Works. You are following the rules. I think what our problem is, is our code. And I think that before we deny this property, which we desperately need housing, and I see a clear future where this property will probably be annexed, it seems to me that we need to look at our code. And I'd like to make two motions in regards to this, and we can continue on, but I just want you to know what I'm thinking. One, that we table this refusal until we actually look at our code, and that we direct the mayor's office to review this code and look to see if there are things that we could include around history or existing things about a property, so that we're making these decisions in a much more holistic view of what is appropriate for our city and appropriate for our communities. Because I, I'm, if everything was just black and white and we didn't have to put any common sense or look at any historical values, you wouldn't need a council, but we have a council. And I think we have to have an opportunity to look at the bigger picture of things and not just the code. If this had no history, I would have no problem whatsoever saying no, but I have a big problem saying no. So we can, I have motions, or we can just hold those and do the, but that's where I'm at with this.
To ask if you're comfortable, we maybe hear from the applicant, have a few more questions, and then you can make your motion, maybe it's, you know, at a more natural point, okay? So definitely come back to you. But Jean?
Real quick. Ted, on page 157, the $42,476.16, is that for the existing parcel that they're getting water for? The latecomers?
There were actually two latecomers on this property. There was a latecomer for the city water main that was expanded to serve that area, including the high school. We upsized the main. At that time, there was an area of assessment where we're charged a latecomer. That latecomer is due upon connection for, so there was one that was for the public. It was from the city for the water main. There was another latecomer, which was a private latecomer for the sewer. So the applicant has paid both of those.
That's just for the existing property, not the subdivision, right? Just the property?
Just the property.
So if I'm adding right, if you, if that's, are those normal charges for hookups?
Yeah, I mean, there's different ways to do the assessment. They weren't, they're not, they're latecomers that are based on the cost of the improvement that front the property. So it's not uncommon if a water main is either extended or an existing water main is upsized, that the adjacent properties will be assessed, their proportionate share of the project. One thing to mention is that those assessments aren't due until connections made.
So if they, if we were to go ahead and give them water, would, water and sewer, they would, that would multiply quite a bit per unit that goes in there, right?
Yeah, so they've paid the latecomer, so there's two different things. The latecomers are paid now. The property owner paid both the sewer and the water latecomer. Anytime a development occurs, they would still be subject to the individual system development charges, and those are the charges that are, that go with each building permit based on whatever's being built and the size of the meter. Those would still be due if this property was served and did develop.
Okay. Any more council questions? So, everyone, so Terry, then April, then Dan.
Yeah, I guess the one question I have, we've, over the years since this ordinance was passed, I've heard a number of these cases, and we've heard some really good arguments about why this one should be special and we should be, do what we've heard them, out chuckin' it, and we've heard them other ways. Is there anything that's that much different that when we're looking at this one than the ones that we've, you know, overall have heard before? Because I didn't see anything particularly, you know, that stuck out at me at this, yeah.
Yeah, so in our analysis of this request, and again, we're using the BMC as our guidance and previous decisions by council, I didn't see anything in the request that was unique about this request. There's some circumstances about it, but we've seen these before, things like granting of easements for the utilities. So this property did grant an easement for the sewer utility, and an argument is made that if you grant the sewer easement, there's an expectation that you're going to be able to hook up to the sewer. to hook up to the sewer. It's not an unreasonable argument, but one that we've seen before. Another case is that they have paid the latecomers. Now, the latecomers weren't due, but they did pay them, and so there's an argument that if you paid the latecomers, then you should be able to hook up. We've had other instances like that as well. It, I think like Councilmember Vargas said, I mean, there's a lot of circumstances around this, including development around the area, urban-style development around the area. But when the city repealed the utility service zones, the city said, "We're no longer holding ourselves out as a regional provider." The reason that that was done, and it was, the council looked at that and said, you know, "We're planning under GMA. We can look throughout the urban growth area and see areas that have developed to an urban standard that have not yet come into the city." And if the ultimate goal is that if you're going to be receiving urban-level service, you should be in the city. If you extend the utilities, you really do away with one of the main reasons for folks to want to annex into the city. So that's been one of the primary basis for the city council's policy. Again, this is a, there's a lot of circumstances around this, but our analysis was, the code is very, very clear that the avenue for access to utilities in the UGA is to annex. And that's been the response that we've always told applicants. Other than that, it's really confined to the public health concern, and that doesn't apply to future development. That's when you have existing development that no longer is able to meet the human health and safety requirements because their utilities have failed in some way. So that was my analysis, but that's why this comes to the city council.
April?
Okay, so a follow-up on Terry's. I guess would this, was there any way that would negatively impact our water? Do you feel if we were to give them water, it could make the system better or worse, or it wouldn't have an impact at all?
No impact on the, on the water. The utility, the mains are there in the overhead up above. All those subdivisions, all those homes adjacent to the property in question, everything out Britton Road and in that area is already served by the city. We have adequate capacity, so it's not a question of whether or not we can serve them.
Okay, and then, this might be better answered by Rick, but when, when somebody develops, so in this case, they'd be able to put more units on than a single-family home, do they have to build to city standards even when they're in a UGA? Or have we ever required that if they don't have to? And then Ted, while he's coming up, when we've given sewer in the past, they sign something that says if we do, you can't, you can't go against us bringing this into the city. So they would be signing that, basically, correct?
A couple of issues there, yeah. We generally, when we provide service outside the city limits, we do it via contract for service, and the contract for service usually has a no protest, or it does have a no protest clause that says that property cannot protest annexation in the future. We can also, as part of a contract for service, we can put some requirements on the development of that property to say you'll develop to the city's standards, and we've done that in the past. So we can do that on the individual properties. But again, we look at it from an annexation perspective, that ultimately you want to have all the area within the city limits. And I'll let Rick perhaps talk about the annexation phasing work that we're doing right now.
Good afternoon, council. Rick Sepler, Planning and Community Development Director. If it was to develop, it would develop with county standards for urban development. Again, we could condition it to have our standards specifically employed. However, we're not party, we're commenters on the development process for anything outside of our city boundary. We have long looked to see the areas that are designated within our urban growth area come into the city. It is an expressed goal of our plan and growth management that over the horizon, the 20-year horizon from the original adoption of GMA, all the areas that were characterized by urban growth are available for our services to accommodate our population would come in. As councils are aware, those areas that had some commercial uses, had some industrial uses, had some potential upside to the city, did come in. Other areas which were previously developed had little incentive to participate. And again, it's done at this point through property owner-initiated petition. Most communities are trying to figure out a way to force this issue, because prolonged deferral isn't good for property owners nor good for the city itself. We need to solve this as best we can. Towards that end, we'll be in front of this body in June with a strategy that looks at every area and has a roadmap to try to bring us to a decision point, whether it should be included or not included in the UGA. Now, there are consequences. If it is not to be included in the UGA, there'll be no extension of our services, period, because we cannot extend our services outside our city and outside our UGA, excepting for a health emergency, and they're very narrowly. In addition, city holdings that are in areas that are beyond our boundary but within the UGA, if it's not going to be in the UGA, would no longer be needed and would be investigated on a case-by-case basis. So I can tell you that this area is part of that study. We'll be coming forward with our best recommendation for discussion, and it's likely to be here in June.
And Dan?
This might be a question for Rick as well, sorry. So I'm trying to understand the timeline on, on that and how those just, I know that that's up to this body to make those decisions, but this UGA looks fairly built out, as far as I can tell. There's a, there are portions of it that aren't. I'm trying to understand when, when it would likely be included within the city's boundaries. That's question one. And then question two might be more, I don't know, for perhaps Ted, but I'm trying to understand what other conditions can, or have been historically applied to these types of agreements, a water agreement for, for this example, on perhaps like housing affordability, like an inclusionary, including maybe 100% AMI, you know, a few units or some percentage of units in the development.
So if I could start with the response, the city's interest to see this lot develop and develop at urban densities, that's the long-term interest. Our challenge is, we found a resistance for property owners who already have utilities, who've already developed, to come into the city. Although in many cases, their taxes actually get reduced. Certainly, their utility rates are reduced. They don't have the surcharge. Often, we're dependent on the property owner to come forward first and to assemble a group of other property owners that are continuous to extend our boundary in orderly fashion. As council might recall, within the last six months, we hear an annexation that was contested by a number of individuals on city services in urban development, in that case with pre-annexation agreements to further ability to do it, to oppose an annexation. Nonetheless, for whatever reasons, they felt that it was not appropriate to come into the city. We would like to find a way to bring this in orderly, and we also are concerned clearly in why the code was crafted, was to avoid every unique circumstance coming before this body, because there are no shortage of parcels that would like service at this time. Nonetheless, we certainly understand the proponents' desire, and I'm not fully up to speed on all the specifics of this case. Thank you.
Regarding the question about what have, what has been included in some of the contracts for service, to date, we haven't had any requirements for affordable housing or anything of that nature. It has all been related to physical improvements. They'll build to our standards in terms of street standards. If they're not the same as the counties, then ours would apply in terms of sidewalks and bike lanes and things of that nature, but nothing about zoning or affordability or anything of that.
Okay, well, I have some questions, but I'm going to defer them, I'm hoping to get to the Alton's representative, but Mr. Mariner?
Yeah, just real briefly, about annexation. A good example, when council made that change to the, to our code, it was in two stages, but the last stage was in 2011. The concern was, you have this, you can see this subdivision to the south and to the east of the property in question, that's Hillside Estates, and we provided water and sewer to that subdivision in 2002, 2003. And since that time, they've shown, there's been no interest in annexing. So that's the problem, is that you can, we can provide the water and sewer, and they can develop at urban standards per the county code, but we're, it's sort of a barrier to future city growth. The last thing I would say is that the property in question can at any time petition to annex. They would have to work with their neighbors, but, but that has, that, that effort has not occurred yet.
That was actually giving you my question, so I might as well ask it now. Could they annex, and right now, they're not connected to the city limits. Would they, would there have to be a physical connection, or can you leapfrog and have an island, or is that not permitted?
No, you, they would need to work with surrounding property owners. We, the council that remembers to the left, quite some time ago, some of the council members will remember a large annexation petition that we considered, including Dewey Valley. That, that property that we were looking to annex but decided not to butts this property.
Yeah, there was considerable opposition by some property owners.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to, at this point, ask a representative of the property owners, Mr. Eddie Hanson, I believe, said he wanted to come up and give you about three minutes to comment. We do have in our packet written representations and email representations by the applicants that we have already had a chance to review, so I'm not expecting a full summary of all your arguments, but Mr. Hanson?
Number one, thank you for allowing me the couple of minutes and stuff, and yeah, you guys know what's going on. Bottom line is, I'm Eddie Hanson. I was born and raised here in Bellingham, been a lifelong resident, so my parents and my grandparents. My grandfather homesteaded this in 1940. He was the one that started the Van Dyke Water Association. He had five shares back in 1960. This is well before all of our times, okay? You know, he bought five shares back then in 1960 to the 100 shares or whatever, for future development. You know, the county has went through and upgraded the zoning back in the 80s and 92, like you guys just said. The city annexed in the, the water system, Van Wyk Water System. You know, we became a customer of the city at that time for the little, whatever, 1,000-square-foot house that my grandfather built in 1996. You know, all the brandy water line went through, and they told us very clearly at the time, and when I say "they," it's the city, told us very clear. My mom's sitting right there. She signed the contract that you're a customer of the city of Bellingham, and now that we're upgrading the water line, you can build to this urban development that we're creating. I mean, that was part of the conversation. You know, in 2000, or, you know, later that same year, the, you know, they, after they did it, they added that lien, after, when they added the lien to the property for this new water li, you know, not for our one service, because we're already a customer, but they added a lien for any other individuals. If you build that out to, to its urban growth, that it's zoned for. You know, it was zoned up, you know, later on when the city did it, it zoned up to 12 units per acre, is what the zoning is right now and has been for 20 years. You know, and why is because of that new water line that the city paid in infrastructure and leaned our property on. 2003 is when the sewer came through. They came to my mom again and said, "The only solution for this new, for that whole states that he just said, we need to get a sewer to get all of that out of there." The only thing that would make sense is if we used your property. And they told, the city told my mom right then, "You will be able to have your urban growth right there." So I mean, there's been discussions all the way through, from the beginning at 40s, 1940s, 1960s, when he bought five water shares, to the contract, and then the latecomer's fee or the lien for the water, to the latecomer's fee for the sewer. I mean, this property, we've always had the intent to develop this property, okay? My wife and I, we had three kids, you know, took seven, nine elevens, right at the same time. We haven't had time to move this project forward, okay? Now we have, you know, and everything that the city has done has been right. Everything that we've done as, as a family has been right. You know, Terry had a good, good point. What exception does this, this one have versus all the rest? Every one of the cases, when we've looked, because trust me, we've done all our legwork on this. There's been other ones that have, have had sewer easements. There's been other ones that have, you know, had different categories. But what other one have any of you guys seen or any on the records that have all those facts, okay, that had five hookups back in the 60s, to then been told very clearly by the city that we can hook up for water, okay, for not just our one, because we were already a customer, but for the development that was planned? To here, okay, give, let's, let's give 10,000 square feet of an easement. That's a lot, a property. It's two city lots is what we gave for the easement, okay? I mean, every step of the way, the city's been forthright and awesome and treated my mom with just nothing but respect. You know, we came through in good faith, paid. We went out to the county first, that's what we had to do. They said, "You can't build this until you prove that we have water and sewer." Well, we knew right then, we were fine, okay? We called the city, said, "How much do we owe?" It was $43,000 to pay those two things. So, you know, it wasn't due until connection. We can't get a connection unless we can build it. The county says we can't build it until we have proof that you can have water and sewer. It's, it's a ro-ro show. It doesn't make sense. This is fair. We're not asking for anything that, that is not absolutely fair. So, so I appreciate what Jean's saying, appreciate what Pinky's saying. All of you guys have great questions. Every utility is at our property. When the city designed it, they put an 8-inch water main into our property. That track street right there, I was just with my kid yesterday, it's a city street with city sidewalks going into my property. That was the way the city engineers designed it and built it. It was there, and they told my family the entire time that we could build this. And all of a sudden, now it's not, I think is unjust. So to me, I believe you seven have the power to make these decisions. You know, it hasn't been annexed and hasn't been annexed. Yes, that's a possibility, but you know, what I'd ask you guys is to think of where your hearts are, and is this the right thing to do? Is it fair? Every other piece of property has been developed on that. To wait for it to get annexed, to do that kind of stuff, I don't know. I think the right thing to do is to honor us. We've paid the $43,000. We've done everything. We'll pay all the extra fees as we build the project, but we'd like to, to have the opportunity to get this community the housing that it needs. I mean, we have a major problem with that, and honor your, your zoning and the county zoning. You guys have done all the work, and we just would appreciate being able to hook up to those utilities. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Okay, I'm going to bring it back now to the council.
Just a few comments, and then Pinky, you're next. I guess I really agree exactly what Mr. Sepler said. It's in the city's long-term interest to see this property develop to urban standards. We need to bring it in an orderly fashion. My problem is, this is not the orderly fashion. This is not occurring the way it's supposed to happen. We've got ourselves through history into an awkward situation. I'd like to do it the way Mr. Sepler is recommending, but I'm not seeing a roadmap forward to that at this point, especially because, as Mr. Mariner pointed out, you know, we've, we have a place where we've extended service, and that area is now a positive roadblock to this area being annexed. You know, this is where we've got ourselves. Our previous mistake is now preventing something now that isn't our long-term interest, isn't our long-term goals. Those are my comments at this point. Pinky, do you want to?
Yeah, my, my thought is, but I want to make sure, I mean, I don't know where our council's at in regard, I mean, we could approve this, but if we wanted to, but if that was something that the council was felt favorably for, otherwise, if we're just going to follow the, our municipal code, which I understand Public Works is obligated to do so, then I would ask that we table this and review the code. So I'm just uncertain about what our council wishes to do moving forward.
Are you, are you calling? Who's calling?
Well...
Michael.
Yeah, at this point, is there any council members who want to speak? Otherwise, I'll recognize Mayor Kelly at this point.
Well, I will. I didn't know if Pinky was making a motion there.
I think she's taking a temperature.
Well, then mine has to do with that.
Well, I guess what I would say is that I think our, our Public Works staff has correctly applied the code. I think they made the right decision under the law, even if I'm not sure I like the result. And that's what puts me in a bind right now. Terry, do you want to say something? I do want to recognize Kelly at some point.
Okay, yeah, but I, I will, I will, I think for my temperature, I guess. I see my view here as, you know, the, the Public Works Director, Public Works Director had made a, made a decision on this. We're asked to review that decision and uphold it or rule against that. And with that, you know, we're basically, the judge, we're judges looking at that, looking at the evidence that he used, and did he apply the right evidence, the right, you know, to this decision? And I don't see anything that does stick out different than other decisions that we currently make. You know, it's like being any other kind of a judge is one thing. You can feel something emotionally and say, "Yeah." But we've had to make those decisions a number of times that you look at things and you want to rule in favor of somebody because this sounds really good, but it's not, doesn't fit within, within our existing code. And we passed that code for a reason, and part of it was so, so that we, we wouldn't have to be making those kind of decisions based on a tug of the heartstring, or does this feel right? Or, you know, we hate to turn it down because we want additional housing, but it doesn't work within this. But, so we, we pass it to allow the, the director to make that decision, and because of problems that we had had, and Jean knows those decisions in terms of making these decisions when they're in the urban growth, on who gets... making these decisions when they're in the urban growth, on who gets this, who doesn't, and the problems with getting people over in this area, we've had a couple issues with some subdivisions, and I keep hearing from people, oh, in 2020 and stuff, saying, oh, why can't we, well, because your other, your neighbors don't want it to come into the city. And so, if we take, and if we take that away, that tool, we don't get those annexations. And so, I think, you know, for me, I would move that we uphold the director's decision. That's my temperature.
Any council members want to speak? Kelly?
Well, as long as I've been mayor, I've watched these decisions come to the council, and Alan knows that, there's one question I've asked Alan over and over and over, if we know where we want to grow, and we know what's appropriate and what's not, how do we say to Mr. Hanson or whoever else has come before us? We can say, no, because this is not going to be where we're going to annex, or we could say, yes, because this is where we want to, and this one's complicated because we don't know if we can or we can't. Whatever you decide to do on this particular one, since I've seen this happen several times, and in general, I think the council's been pretty consistent on, on what they've decided, I would love it if you would pass Pinky's, at least part of Pinky's motions about reviewing what happened in 2011, because with the annexation study that Rick and the Planning Department are doing, we may want to make another decision that we can apply to everybody again, that doesn't necessarily, that is a different, a different policy than what we have now. There might be a policy that works better, but I think part of it is understanding where we want to annex and where we don't want to annex, and making sure that that, that's how we follow up on who potentially would get water and who wouldn't. I understand the frustrations of being told something for a long period of time, and then the law changes, and then you're on the other side of the, you know, other side of it, and I've seen that happen several times, too. So, regardless of this decision, I would request that you direct me and the staff to look at the 2011 policy and come forward with some potential other solutions and timeframes for you.
Roxanne, and then Dan.
I just wanted to speak in support of what the mayor just said, because one of my tough issues with this is that we're telling the applicant, please annex, and that would be our stated desire, understandably, but yet, we don't have a clear picture of what we want out of annexation and our future urban growth. And I think it's our responsibility to set those parameters, to help people understand what they can expect out of future development, express what our interests are for where we want to grow, and then create better accountability for what our community will experience out of that growth and development, ways that it will impact our housing sources and all of the like. So, that's why it's a rub for me in just outright denying it, because we haven't painted our side of the picture yet.
Dan?
Well, from the mayor and from Councilmember Murphy on why that background is important, I'm just wondering, since you're probably going to introduce that motion, or kind of tentatively did, what, Councilmember Vargas, what you intend or what you are expecting to discover or find out or about the, the history of the BMC?
I think Jean is next in line.
Well, I'll be quick.
Okay.
Because I remember when we first started this, and I, unless I'm wrong, I have never seen 112 pages on a sewer denial, unless I'm starting to lose it. That's, that's just me. This is a special circumstance. And the ironic thing about this, and one of the reasons we need to look at this policy, and I've been advocating that for a long time, it's time to look at this policy again. The Hanson's did nothing wrong, and the Public Works Department did nothing wrong, it's up here with us, and that's what we're doing here, and that's why I would, if Pinky makes a motion to postpone this and look at the policy, I'd be all in favor.
Pinky?
I'd like to make a motion that we table this denial of request for retail water until we have had a chance, and I would like to direct the mayor's office to review this policy and see if there is an opportunity for policy change to be consistent and equitable in our water assessments that include future annexation review? Does that encompass all of those things?
I'm going to try to restate the motion. It sounded like there were two components, but maybe it's one motion. The motion is to table until, and the until is a review of the policy or presentation of the policy back to the council, the policy which is prohibiting, which underlies the ordinance which currently leads to the denial of sewer service.
Definitely simplify.
Is that a good restatement?
Second.
We have a motion, a second before us. I see Terry, then April, then myself.
I will vote for tabling it, but I think to, to do, if you go the, the second step to direct staff to bring forth a review of an ordinance, I think we need to do Rick's part of things, of which he's in the process of doing. How do we make those decisions until he brings that review back for us, which we're supposed to consider? If we're supposed to consider which direction we go, that's where that's coming, but, so I will vote for the review, to table this, but...
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead, April's next and myself, but April says it's fine. Can we hear from the mayor first?
Oh, I just was getting on the list, but that's okay.
Because basically, the motion includes a request to the administration, and Terry is saying that that request maybe needs to, or might, in his opinion, include some of the work that Mr. Sepler was referring to.
And I just wanted everyone to know, it does include some of the work that, that Rick is doing, because we're looking at a broader policy than just one, one decision on one piece of property. So, we can't do it unless we know what our annexation strategy is going to be, and then know where we might make exceptions. So, yes, Terry, that's, that's part of the work that we would be doing.
Okay, so you sort of talked and orchestrated this beforehand, so good, just so...
Well, no, I've talked about this to, this, this poor person here before.
Okay, so that, so you did, okay.
Sorry, Alan.
Okay, April?
I have a couple of things. Alan, just to be sure with Robert's rules, I thought a table would mean somebody would have to make a motion to bring it back. Are we just wanting to postpone this or table it? I want to make sure.
In the tabling motion, the trigger event is what brings it back.
Okay, so it's attached to that? Are we, it's not going to disappear unless we bring a motion back? I just don't want this to, sometimes tabling things can kill them, and I don't want that to happen with this, and then maybe something changes on council and there's not support to get it back on. So, are we stating it properly?
Yeah, I would just post, post, change it from tabling it to postpone, but I would also ask, we should check, and I assume that the, we're here today because the applicant requested review.
Right.
I would just ask Mr. Hanson to acknowledge that he's comfortable with that, or whether he wants a decision today or not, and I assume he wants to postpone it.
I think we're not there yet. So, tabled a motion is more difficult than a, a motion to postpone, in many ways, they're functionally equivalent.
So, I was, I'll, I'll make a motion to amend.
I was going to say, I could just amend my...
Yeah, move it to postpone versus table.
Okay, so there's a motion to amend, a motion to say, have it be postponed instead. Is there any objections to the amendment? Seeing no objections, so amended. Okay, so the motion now before us is to postpone the decision, we're not going to vote just yet, postpone the decision until we hear back from the administration on a review of the policy which underlies the current ordinance, which the Public Works Department has used as their basis for denial of the request. I'm next in line. I think that the Public Works made the correct decision under ordinance to deny it, and I think also Mr. Sepler, as I said, was correct that art is in our long-term interest to promote orderly development in this area. The problem is between us and annexation, which is, as you say, is exactly what we would request the applicant to do, lies both Halesdale Development and as well as Gundy's, and I'm not so sure if either of those would be willing to be annexed, and so how do we reach out to an island, which now is an island, which is stranded? I don't, I don't know what magic the administration can find to overcome this problem, but right now, applying the code accurately, you know, we'd have to vote no, and, and voting no isn't just, you know, voting no this applicant, but is kind of recognizing that we're, we've got a roadblock that exists whether or not this applicant had this request at this time, the roadblock is there right now. How do we overcome the roadblock? I think that's a larger question. Anybody else care to speak? I see Terry, then April.
Yeah, just, I just want to make sure when, when staff brings this back, that it be brought back very carefully, because we've made some decisions based on the same arguments on some properties that we don't necessarily want to see them come back in and say, okay, hey, you're opening this up and you denied us, and, and I know Ted knows exactly where I'm thinking, and, and, you know, we got to be very careful when we're cherry picking which ones, that, that's why our rules better be very clear, so we don't have others that come back, and, and so, just be very careful on wording when it comes back with, with that, because there's some, bunch of money out there that's willing to come flying out to, if they see a crack in the, in the armor.
April?
Well, I'm not really sure where you're going with a bunch of money out there.
Oh, Jean knows.
Well, these are people with property interests that are coming to develop their properties, and so I don't, I don't think we should be shading, shading them any particular way. I do agree, and I think staff would do a wonderful job of bringing back something very specific, and that might open doors that have previously been closed, but those are the things that we'll have to look at, the consequences of that in this council is the able body that can make those determinations. My frustration, and I imagine it would be for the applicant as well, is that we're, we're kind of saying what, what it sounds like we've done many times in the past, well, if you could just wait a little bit, we're going to go over here and make these decisions. And unfortunately, in the past, we've made decisions that have negatively impacted them, that which have not allowed them to build when they thought they could. I do think some things are different. I, I've watched in my own neighborhood, things sitting in the UGA, I mean, people would say it's ripe for development, but there's, there's huge traffic barriers, there's having to zone and upzone once it gets there. I mean, this is, this is sitting there, kind of ready to go, and it doesn't have as many barriers as a lot of other ones. And potentially, the other problem we have right now is housing. I mean, it's a little bit difficult to say somebody's coming to try to build housing and middle housing. They're willing to build townhomes, two and three bedrooms, so a little bit of mixed income, it's exactly what we said in our comprehensive plan that we want to look at. So here, we have somebody ready to go, and we know by what Michael just said, there's going to be huge hurdles, we know we're not ready for our annexation phasing plan. My, I guess legally, as a new council member, I'm trying to understand, and Peter or Alan might be able to help me, our council member had mentioned that it's just up to us to enforce, make sure the code was applied correctly, and then to enforce, enforce that code, or are we, we're the body that it's coming to, so if we don't want to uphold that code, we have the potential ability to say, is that correct? Because I'm hearing a suggestion that we just have to enforce the code.
As, as one of the city attorneys, I would advise you to apply your code. Or, if the code isn't what you want it to be, then you go through the process that's been described to amend the code.
Okay, I'm going to ask a question to the council and recognize Member, Councilmember Pinky Vargas. The question to the council is, has there been a suggestion that we do something a little bit unusual, which is allow the applicant to speak to the current motion? Is there any objection to that?
No objection.
Okay, I'm seeing no objections. I'll recognize Councilmember Vargas first.
I was just going to say that I, I'm just suggesting a policy change, because it become, it's become very clear that our policy might be working against what our goals and our missions are of a city, and that isn't serving any of us. So, and you're right, Terry, there might be some companies that are, or people who are going to come back to us, but even in those decisions, I think our policy wasn't serving us. So, I think as a governing body, we really need to look at whether our policy is matching our mission and our goals of our city, and that's what I'm asking us to do.
Very briefly, I'm going to try to confine you to maybe 30 seconds or a minute. Is there, would the applicant care to speak just briefly to the issue of the current motion, which would be to postpone this decision?
Would you just repeat the motion one more time? Please, sorry.
No, that's, as I understand the motion, the motion before the council is to postpone the decision to either overturn or approve the Public Works Director's decision, and that postponement would be delayed until we have from the administration a review of the policy and the ordinance that is being applied in this case, to see if the ordinance and the policy says and does what we want it to do.
So, out of just simple fairness, how long would that be? I do have $43,000 that I've paid back in November, and that's, I've been waiting till now, and so, this was kind of a big day, and my legal counsel told me very clearly that you guys are the decision makers, and you guys can make whatever decision you want, yes or no, on supplying water and sewer to this piece of property or not. That was very clear, the legal is these seven people.
Mr. Hanson, I do not have the answer, but the mayor thinks June.
That's what...
If you say it, Kelly.
The mayor has passed the buck to Rick, and Rick says June.
If she says it, I, I will wait till June, and that's just fine.
Okay, thank you for your input on that. Decision, however, is still on our shoulders. Is there any further discussion of the motion to postpone our decision, which would be a review of the planning, Public Works Director's decision to deny water service? Terry?
I'm rethinking, I'm going to have to vote no on it, because we're asked to make a decision based on the existing law and how it is and stuff, and for us to now say, well, we're not going to make a decision on this, we're going to look at possibly changing everything for this one case so that we can do this. This is the case before us, Kelly, it's one case before us, but it could apply for others, but we're doing it based on this one case.
We have to call a question!
And I think, and I think that, that's really bad policy for the council, so I can't do that, because I mean, if we do that at every decision, that's bad.
Calling the question requires a supermajority vote. Do we want to actually call the question?
I hope so.
I think maybe we should just, I don't think you need a motion to call the question. I think we should maybe, if there's no more people who want to talk to it...
Do you approve my motion? Please, let's go.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak to this motion? Okay, I'm just going to say that I would have to vote to deny water service, and I, sewer service, and I don't want to do that, I think it goes against public interest, so I'm going to support the motion. Any further discussion? Also in favor of the motion to postpone this decision, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed?
Aye.
That motion passes six to one. Go on to the next item. Thank you very much, everyone.
Next item for us is a, the subject is a work session to revise our municipal code to make low-impact development, the preferred and commonly-used approach to site development as required by the city's National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Phase II Municipal Stormwater Permit. Basically, this is a large-scale rewrite of our code. We actually passed this ordinance first reading, and then there were some changes made. Because of those changes, the council asked that it come back. Those have been explained. There were two issues in particular that I think were identified by myself mostly. One of those issues had to do, let me just get them in order, sorry, that last one was a little bit exhausting.
[laughing].
Yeah, it was exhausting. Had to do with the fact that we were in the code, we were citing not to the code, but to the ordinances. I said this really isn't a good practice, there was some suggestion that maybe there was a good reason even there. Mr. Mariner, apparently you reviewed this and also found that to be problematic, but could you talk us through the issue of how, why we want code to cite code, and how that applies in this case?
Well, I raised, when I reviewed the ordinance back in January, I raised that exact, that's one of the issues that I raised, and I, I said, well, you know, citing to these old code, these old ordinances is not user-friendly, because you don't know what that ordinance actually says without locating the ordinance. I talked to Jason Porter about that, and he agreed to go back and change those, but when he started to do it, it was a monumental task, in that these old ordinances that can date back to the 1990s, or maybe, yeah, probably 1990s, that's probably as far back as they go, but they amend multiple, sometimes dozens of BMC sections. So, figuring out what BMC section you should put in there to replace a citation to an old ordinance was problematic, would be extremely time-consuming, and was not part of the Stormwater LID Ordinance Project, which is under a time constraint, we were supposed to adopt... LID ordinance project, which is under a time constraint, we were supposed to adopt this ordinance as of the beginning of this year, so we're behind the eight ball. The other thing that I want to note is that this ordinance and the work by Public Works did not insert any old ordinances into our code, those are existing citations, but that is really a code cleanup matter, that is gonna require some resources, but that wasn't this project. I don't know, Ted, if you have anything else to add?
Right, so what we're hearing now is that these problems, these are indeed problems, but unfortunately, now is not the time to clean them up, and I, I can certainly concede that, I don't concede the idea that citing ordinance was a good idea, apparently no one does, we can't fix it. The other issue that was identified had to do with the word encouraged, and the objection, or the reason to go away from encouraged apparently is that encouraged was seen as difficult to enforce language, but as I understand it now, we're not actually enforcing this, because these are all optional procedures, so the objection to encourage is not its enforceability, but Mr. Mariner, you and I talked, there's another issue, why encouraged may not be the best language for optional procedures?
Yeah, so I, I identified that issue too, but from a different perspective, when I see an ordinance that says the city shall encourage or permit something, I look at that as, that's not enforceable language. So I contacted Jason back in January and said, why aren't we requiring these things? And he explained that it's not, it's not what it appears to be, and I, I now realize that there are certain things that the city doesn't want to encourage or require, like deviations from our normal development standards, but will permit them if necessary to meet our LID stormwater standards. And the best example, and this is the example that Jason gave, was the city normally doesn't want, wants to limit the number of curb cuts on an arterial, but, and we don't want to encourage curb cuts, but we will, under this code as written, would permit the curb cuts if necessary to meet your LID standard. So permit was, we're not necessarily encouraging it, because it's not something we'd normally want, but we're permitting it if that's what you need to do to be able to meet the new stormwater requirements. So in my discussions with, with Jason, I, that seemed like the right language versus encourage. We wouldn't encourage multiple curb cuts in an ar, on an arterial street.
Okay, so this ordinance actually is ready for third and final this evening, so no motion is needed at this time.
Good.
Ready to go on?
Yep.
Next item, thank you very much, Mr. Mariner, is presentation of a public opinion survey of Bellingham residents. Representatives are here from Western Washington University's Center of Economic and Business Research, and under contract with the city, they did a survey, and they'll provide a presentation of the results of that survey of Bellingham residents, this was conducted in late 2016, to gauge residents' priorities and satisfactions with city services. Surveys of this sort have been conducted roughly every other year since 2004, with different focuses and slightly different questions each time. The 2016 survey repeated many of the questions asked in earlier surveys, with a particular emphasis on the long-term goals as described in the city's legacies and strategic commitments. A full report of the survey results is posted on the city's website, inside our package was a summary review. Mr. Hodges, I don't know who we should go to first? Kelly? Okay, so Kelly claims it first. So we're gonna have a presentation, we're gonna start with a hearing from Mayor Linville, and then I believe she will push that over to Mr. Hodges, and then the rest of his team. Kelly, go ahead.
Yes, that's true. Yeah, I hardly ever get to introduce anybody, so I wanted to take this opportunity. We were excited about doing our residential survey this, this year, and I want to thank Michael and Terry for, Terry, correct, for being the two council members who sat with us and tried to figure out how we wanted to do this. As you know, we asked if Western Washington University's Center for Economic and Business Research would conduct the survey for us, and I know from talking to Vanessa that we've been very pleased with the results that, that they've gotten, that they've gotten for us. This is our sixth residential survey, we've done it since 2004. We've asked many of the same questions that we asked before, we changed our format, which is basically asking the community, the community satisfaction questions, and not necessarily putting the metrics in with the arrows, I think we all looked at that. We're using all those results, but we're not including them together, and then there's so many of the problems that the, the city's dealing with are very complex, and they're, they include more than one aspect of service or investment that we need to make, that we asked if we, if they, there could be trends indicated that would take all the different questions that they ask, and whether it's homelessness, or affordable housing, or jobs, there are many parts of the survey where citizens answered questions, or community members answered questions, and then that fed into the trends that are going to be shared with us. The data has also been shared to influence our data management, so our metrics. I'm gonna, I'm gonna massacre Isabel's name, but I want to try to do it. The three people that we had the pleasure of working with are Isabel Vasiliadis.
That was pretty close.
What is it?
It's Vasiliadis.
That was pretty close.
I was one of the closest.
James McCafferty and Hart Hodges, and with that, I'll turn it over to them.
We'll turn it over to Isabel very, very shortly. One of the things that we try to do at the center is include other faculty, but especially students. I wish we could say all of our students were like Isabel, but they're not, so.
Just graduated?
Yes.
And we're hoping to keep her around in the MBA program, but she's done, she was a big help on this project and, and some other projects. One thing, James and I run the center together, and one thing that we wanted to note really quickly, because we've been receiving some emails, we highlighted in one of the write-ups both the confidence levels that we have around the statistics, and somebody said, how can you be confident in this, in the results when a lot of the respondents were homeowners, more, a heavier number, a heavier percentage of the respondents were homeowners than is true for the city overall? So a quick note, precision in statistics is not the same thing as accuracy, and confidence levels go around the precision side, so we tried to highlight that the simple fact that the respondents tended to be, despite the best efforts to have a random sample, a little longer-lived, longer residency or tenure in Bellingham than, than might be average, a little heavy on the homeowner's side, et cetera, but we also wanted the survey to be as, as similar to past surveys, because it's the trends that can be really helpful to you guys. I don't know if you've got anything to add, or we can turn it over to Isabel.
Sounds good. Well, thank you for your time and the opportunity to work with you. As Hart said, we are presenting the report of, about the residential survey that we conducted between mid-October and mid-November of last year. So we sent out a letter and reminder postcard with both a link and phone number that could be called to participate in the survey. We sent this out to seven thousand randomly-selected residences in Bellingham, and we obtained just shy of an eighteen percent response rate, with a little bit more than twelve hundred responses, seventy-three by phone. The survey itself, as Kelly mentioned, was based off of past reports, we use some of the, most of the same survey language, but we changed it a little bit to make it more readable and informative. It's a combination of about sixty questions, most of them are multiple-choice, but we also have some rank-order ones in there, and some open-end questions, which provided a lot of very interesting and useful information about people's opinions. So moving on to who was taking the survey, we had more females this year than males, about, at about a fifty-one response rate for females, we also had some people in the other category, some represented that they were taking the survey as a household together, and some preferred not to share their gender. The ages of respondents somewhat, as you can see, younger respondents were not as represented as we would have hoped, and older respondents were more represented than the actual demographics of Bellingham, so we're looking at a slightly more female, slightly older response base And we do have more homeowners responding to the survey than other years in particular, and more homeowners than represented than the typical zoning requirements, and less renters than expected. And we can also see in this, in the question that asks, how long have you lived in Bellingham? We can see that many of the respondents are seasoned residents of Bellingham, the majority of them have lived here for more than ten years, and so they, people are responding who are invested in the community, they are homeowners mostly, and they have lived here for a while. They've seen, seen it change, and a lot of people indicated that in their open-ended responses.
I'm gonna guess most of these guys don't hang out in the census data a lot, so your homeownership to renter is about fifty-fifty, just so you an idea here, so it is, the gap there is really interesting, and it was interesting for us to look at, and it's something we've suggested looking at more in further.
We did get some people who did not want to classify themselves as renter or owner, they wanted a couch-surfer category, but we didn't have it.
So a few more interesting facts about the respondent demographics, we did have respondents from every neighborhood in Bellingham, some respondent, or some neighborhoods were more represented, but that tended to correlate with which populated, or which resident, which neighborhoods had more residences by population. About a quarter of respondents have dependent children living in their households, and respondents from this survey report higher incomes than the previous surveys. So these demographic facts and information are just useful to keep in mind when we're going through the answers to these questions, and to the future questions, which we're going on to now, and I also want us to keep in mind that these questions are aimed at gauging people's perceptions of how the city is doing on different issues, and I'm sure you know that. So starting off with the quality of life in Bellingham, Bellingham people, at least the respondents to this survey, reported very high quality-of-life ratings, with almost ninety-eight percent of people reporting either excellent or good quality of life. We only had two respondents total that reported a poor quality of life here. In addition, we asked respondents to rank some of their top Bellingham values in a rank-order list, and the ones that came out as the top-rated values are listed here. Moving on to some of the challenges that we're facing Bellingham, so we also did a rank-order question that asked people to rank, like, the values, the challenges, and the importance of the challenges that are facing Bellingham, and by a significant majority, especially because there were about twelve or thirteen options to choose from, fifty-five percent of respondents ranked homelessness as either the one or two, or the number one or two top challenges facing us here in this town. And while this was the only place that homelessness was actually mentioned in the survey, the open-ended responses really reiterated that this is what people's, is on people's minds, what's affecting their answers to other questions. For example, we asked respondents who rated, rated the city's efforts to prevent crime and protect the community as either fair or poor, to expand on why they answered that way, and homelessness was the number-one contributing factor for these respondents that contributed to this rating, their more negative rating of preventing crime and protecting the community. One of the final questions on our survey was to put residents in, in city leaders' shoes and ask what positive changes they would make, and solving homelessness was mentioned by a landslide again, more than any other topic. And I do want to note here that there was a range, a huge range of how people viewed the subject, and people really did want to acknowledge that solving homelessness, they knew was more of a complicated issue, and it's not a Band-Aid fix, but they would like to see that we're taking actions towards fixing this problem.
Isabel, maybe just for a moment, we did ask for a lot of open-ended questions of people, asked them to provide us their thoughts, and they provided you well over a hundred pages of their thoughts. In fact, it's probably over a hundred and fifty pages, it's a lot. Your, your community has given you a lot of just top-of-mind reflection and things, people spent an average of twenty minutes taking the survey, they, they committed a lot of time, energy, and effort to this, so I do encourage you all to actually look through the, the full document at those comments, because there's, there's, there are nuggets of goodness in there for you guys to consider.
There are. There's a lot of flavor in those. So our second top-rated challenge facing Bellingham is housing affordability. This was ranked in the top two for forty-three percent of respondents in the same question discussed in regard to homelessness. This graphic that we're seeing here, so first of all, I want to point out that the vertical axis does represent the response rate for each question. This is, this was one of the biggest historical changes that we saw of any question in the survey, it's really big, as you can see, we're moving from, we're moving, we see that some of the answers moved this year from the excellent and good, or very good categories, over to this fair or poor category. I do want to, want to note that this does mirror statewide trends, Bellingham isn't alone in the housing affordability challenge, and I don't know if Hart or James have something else to say about the state trends. So the third top-rated challenge was growth and economic development, which is really, all of these challenges are related to each other, as you can tell. So here we don't see too much historical change in the excellent or poor categories, but we see some people moving from good over to fair, so that's not a huge change in, in regard to the city's efforts planning for growth, but I do want to note here on this don't-know or no-opinion category, that we are seeing a rising rate of those people that are either uninformed or unopinionated, and we can especially see this in our next question about economic development and business growth, that don't-know-or-no-opinion section is rising to almost twenty percent of respondents, which is significant. Similar to the last question, we have mostly people moving from good to fair, rather than switching from the poles of excellent or poor. So that just about sums up those top three challenges that we're seeing pulled from this survey of homelessness, growth and economic development, and housing affordability. And a couple of other trends that we drew from here, from the survey was, this was an interesting section on budget preferences, asking respondents to put, again, put themselves in city leaders' shoes and choose budget priorities when they're faced with a tight budget. So we had, as you can see, the options of either, when they're faced with a tighter budget, they can increase taxes and fees and maintain current levels of services, they can cut, cut services to keep taxes and fees the same, or choose a little bit of both. So as expected, we had almost half of our respondents choosing a little bit of both, but it should be noted that people, in theory, would rather, rather keep services at the current levels than, and they report that they are willing. current levels than, and they report that they are willing to pay a little bit more to keep the services at current levels rather than cutting services to keep taxes and fees the same. We also delved a little bit more into the budget preferences and asked people if they had to choose a service to cut, to rank services based on which are most highest priority for the budget and lowest priority for the budget. So this was like, you know, if you had to choose. So what came out as the highest priority services that residents viewed were crime prevention and emergency response services, and the lowest priority services were culture and arts experiences and recreational programs. But I do want us to keep this in mind with some of our top-ranked values. We can see number three and five are recreational programs and opportunities and culture and arts experiences. So we value it, but might not want to put too much funding towards it. Another thing that came out of the, some of the open-end responses were that a lot of people weren't aware that some of the culture and arts experiences or recreational programs were provided by the city. So they thought they were, you know, privately provided, so that might be an opportunity So moving to people's feelings of safety downtown, both in, this graphic represents the daytime and afterwards will have the nighttime. So we have, people do feel generally safe downtown during the day. We don't have so many respondents reporting that they don't feel very safe, or they don't at all, feel at all safe. But we see some respondents moving from that extremely or very safe category to the somewhat safe. So we're feeling a little bit more iffy about it, but then we move over to the nighttime downtown safety, and we, we see less than 10% of people feeling extremely or very safe at night. Although there wasn't a huge drop in, there was an increase in the somewhat safe respondents, and so probably people are moving from that extremely to the somewhat, and yes. Moving to some environmental measures, looking at renewable energy and how important these environmental actions were to respondents. Promoting the use of renewable energy, we use the example of green or solar power. It seems to, people seem to be coming a little bit more divided, as we can see at the polls here of extremely important and not at all important. Those are both increasing, while the, the people in the middle are either decreasing or staying about the same there. So, so people are becoming a little bit more polarized in their opinions regarding renewable energy. We also had a question concerning the development of the Lake Watcom watershed. It does appear that in extremely important, in the extremely important category, that was the only response rate that was increasing. I also do want to note that we changed the wording of this question from the previous surveys to include, as we can see down at the bottom here, so it, we added that the informational fact that Lake Watcom is Bellingham's primary source of drinking water. So we're not sure if that could have influenced the results, but we added that in there, and people seem to be responding positively and thinking that it is important to prevent development on the Lake Watcom watershed. So those were some of the main trends that we pulled from this survey. There were also many other subjects in there, and you can find that on the full report. But in conclusion, really, I want to keep that first graphic in mind, the quality of life. People really do value Bellingham as a place to live. We had a great response rate to this survey, which shows that people do care. But there are challenges that emerged, again, homelessness, housing affordability, and growth and economic development. And that is the end of our presentation. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Isabel. Any further comments from you, or should we open up questions? Any questions for the team? Pinky.
One of the things you mentioned is survey fatigue, and honestly, if a survey's over five questions, I'm usually done. So somebody actually went through 60 questions? That's amazing. But is that significantly lower, 18%, than previous years? Or, I'm just curious, in regards to the sampling, how much that has changed over the years?
I'm not sure what the specific response rates were from previous years, but we did have a much higher number of responses than previous years. They were about at about 500.
The response rate's about the same. I mean, the overall response rate is about the same. It's actually a very high response rate, as far as surveys go, and you're absolutely correct, because you lose a lot of people. And so we do have that in some of the questions. You might start out with, I'll just make numbers up, but let's say you start out with 1,000 people, by the last question, maybe you only have 800. That happens in all, all studies. And so what we do is, because the, the questions don't depend on the previous questions necessarily to be statistically sound, we do it based on where people have stopped or completed to. So, but we make sure that, that survey sample stays representative throughout.
Other council members? Pinky again?
Sorry, I wanted to make sure if anyone. So the other thing that kind of is striking about this, I mean, this is wonderful information, and I always find this super, super helpful, so thank you for this. It gives us a direct pulse on what our constituents are thinking about how we're doing our jobs. So thank you for that. But the other thing is, as I was looking at some of the things, it's interesting how statistics can tell you two stories. One of them, obviously, high priority crime prevention, that's really important, low recreational, but if you look at the demographics of the people who are actually answering the questions.
Right.
If it's predominantly people who are seniors answering the questions, then recreation is probably not their number one priority. So I just wanted to throw that out there. Not that I'm a kid, not, I do, I'm not assuming, I'm just saying they probably are not demanding for as, as much of that. So I just wanted to.
Or programs.
Or programming, et cetera. So that, that's one thing, is that I, I want us to think of all of these things when we're looking at these actual survey results of all the stories that are being told.
Also, go ahead.
Recreation also is defined in the eye of the beholder in a lot of ways, which is one of the things Isabel referenced, that, that people don't see some of the things they're engaged in as a recreational activity, ironically. And so, yes and yes. But at the same time, you have this challenge with people that don't always quite define things the way they, they actually are. I also wanted to comment that we asked, as a best practice in the work that we do, we generally always ask in surveys, would you be interested in participating in further research? And in this case, how many did we have?
Around 600.
Around 600 people provided us their emails, so that we are actually able to do snap polls if the city so desires at a later date. So we already have a survey pool, so it's a random sample of a random sample, which makes the answers random. No. But it is a very effective way to get some opinions from a diverse group of people that is spread around the city.
Thank you, Terry, and then I'll recognize myself.
Yeah. One thing I did find interesting, well, first off, just a comment. It didn't surprise me at all in terms of the, of the grouping of respondents, because they fall very similar to how we look at, at, at voting groups. You know, the most consistent four, four voters are, are older people and property owners, and, and it falls in, in different things here. But the, the interesting thing is, when you see the majority being property owners and those, and then the majority of people saying they would be willing to increase taxes for services, knowing that the primary tax is property tax. So they're saying, we are willing to tax ourselves, because the majority, our property owners that responded, and it's property tax going to increase it, and they're saying, yes, we value these kind of services. I mean, that says a whole lot about the community, about the community, that they're willing to, to do that. So that, I found that real, real interesting.
Yes.
I'm going to take a turn, and then I believe it's April, and then Dan. I'm going to raise a couple of methodological issues, and I don't expect you to answer them. I think the best thing is to ask to go on offline to ask, ask them. But Hart, the way you described the whole accuracy issue, I would describe this as saying this is an accurate reflection of a mildly biased sample. And the solution to that is use something like stratified sampling. You fix it at the front end to make sure you have representative sample. There's also a backend solution, where you can wait the responses based on what the, the population should have been. I'd love to see that, not here, not now. I also think it's really important for every number to have a context. That context can be a benchmark, a comparison. You use that in some of the cases. You know, for example, the housing affordability issue. You gave it context, because you said, this is actually a statewide trend, right? So, oh my gosh, we have a problem. Well, no, actually, we have a statewide and sometimes a nationwide problem. So I'd like to see more context given and built into the survey, and some of that context is internal context, time series data. And sometimes you had time series data, and it was always useful when you did. I'd also like to see more trade-off questions. You can ask someone, do you like puppies? They'll say, yes. Do you like puppies more than cats? Well, now you don't get 100%, you know, response. Trade-off questions can be really important if you're asking the right pairing, and I'm wondering if we could do some follow-up to drill down on some of the questions on that. I think it's really important that we realize, as you acknowledged, or maybe, maybe it was you, Isabel, who acknowledged, that homelessness is not one issue. It's viewed different ways by different people. There are problems downtown that are associated with some vagrancy and some inebriations and misbehavior, and a lot of those people are actually not homeless, but that might be the category that people are referring to. I think that there's ways we can address those public safety issues that are really a separate kind of solution than the issue of housing affordability, which is another big problem. And so it's kind of unfortunate if we mush those two issues together. And it's not just we do it, I think a lot of people do it, but it's important for us to separate it out. So I guess I'd like to make a personal request to, after I read the full report, which I haven't seen, to talk with, I don't know, Isabel, if you're going on to bigger and better things, or somebody else. I'd appreciate you doing that. I think it was, who was it next? Was it April? April, and then Dan?
So having seen this survey, I, it's tough. We get a lot of surveys at our house, and if it's something that I feel really excited about, of course, I'll sit down, I'll take an hour to do it. In this case, I'll force one of my household members to sit down and fill it out. But this is what's difficult, because if somebody feels disenfranchised, or is, is part of a marginalized population already, I mean, it's like, why would I, why would I spend all this time? And so, I mean, I appreciate that you're trying to dig into that. You have a, a pretty conscious student body up at Western, and I think if you reach out to some people there, they might be able to help you think of how to present this or get this in a way that it might grab or help somebody in that, you know, it's, this is coming directly to your council, or these are things that your council's going to take into account, that this is a direct line. Maybe, maybe somebody might want to take the time. I think with that, if we do a future one, I'd, I'd really like to understand how connected people feel to their government. And so I think those are some easy questions to put in there. When you were mentioning don't know, I mean, we're making an assumption that maybe they're not as informed, or maybe they just don't really care, you know? And so I, I, it would be interesting to kind of see how much, or how much they understand, or how connected they feel to that government and the process, and if they feel like it's I also, to this, to this body, want to say, I mean, here we have single-family homeowners who are willing to raise taxes, who are recognizing, I mean, it's, it's kind of, it's us. It's this community that passed a housing levy in the middle of recession. I, I think we keep coming up to this housing affordability conversation, and our community's telling us, but like, I mean, we have it kind of on our docket, and it's coming, but it's also this highly politicized conversation. But right here, people are saying housing affordability. So I, I'd also like to unpack it and dig in a little bit more, like, is it that housing affordability that's like arms-length that happens over there? Or is this like, I want to generally be involved in this housing affordability conversation? So that might be something for some of the follow-ups. But it's our top two things. We're really nailing off, we're trying to, with dealing with some of the homelessness issues, but, I mean, a, a major one of talking about, what are we going to do within our city boundaries, especially when we set these really strong codes that say, nope, that is the line, and until you come in, when are we going to do it? Like, when is this council, or is this council really going to have that conversation sooner than later? The community's telling you, and as Terry would say, the vote, some of the primary voters are telling you.
I think that all of these are really interesting and would, directions for future research, and probably would produce really interesting results. There are some questions in, that are represented in the full report that aim at how people are perceiving the, the government's communication with citizens, so that may be of interest.
Definitely. Dan?
I'm going to reserve my comments for the next three items. They're, they're about homelessness and affordable housing. I think they're more germane to the, the discussions that we're going to have.
Okay. I did want to say one last comment that I forgot. One of the things I think is really important is to sometimes look at other significant variables that influence, influence the outcome. So for example, if we could, if you did break it down, covariate by the higher-income reporters and the lower-income reporters, or by the renters and the owners, in other words, it might be a, a separate set of concerns for different populations. You have the data, right? I don't know if you divided it up, I'd like to see it. I think there might be some nuggets in there, or maybe not, we don't know until you look. I think it's, I, I think these things are highly valuable every time we do them. Any further discussion on this issue? Pinky?
One last thing, I was just going to say, I recommend that we post a link to this on our Facebook site for people to take a look at it. Maybe we could highlight the top, saying, yes, people are happy, but the top three concerns, that people have mentioned it, and just as another opportunity for communication.
Any objection to that? Great. Okay. Thank you very much. It was Hart, Isabel, and James. Thanks very much for presenting.
Thank you all.
Any further comments?
And yes to the offline, good notes.
Okay, good.
Yes.
We'll do coffee. Moving on, there's two more items, there's sort of a pair, they have to do with a, a related issue. The first one is an overview of a letter of intent between the City of Bellingham and the Lighthouse Mission Ministries. This has to do with the issue of homelessness, which we just talked about. City staff and Lighthouse Mission's executive director, Mr. Hans, Eric, Chinger, Kinger?
Urschinger.
Urschinger, thank you. Urschinger Davis will provide an overview of an update on a preliminary agreement to partner to serve vulnerable, high-risk homeless individuals in a new, to-be-built, easy-access shelter. The agreement includes a lease of land to the Lighthouse Mission and a sale of existing structures, again, to the mission, and a contract for services. Once the facility is open, the shelter is expected to serve approximately 200 individuals per night, and be operated, 24-hour meals, services, bathrooms, shower facilities. Just a little bit of background, so this actually is a result of a rather long effort the city's been undergoing, especially by Mayor Linville, to try to address our need for shelter services. Some of that discussion has been going on, kind of, you know, in private. We're now to the point where this is being brought forward for public discussion review, and to begin that, shall I turn over to you? So Ms. Tara Sundin, would you like to begin?
Thank you. I want to call your attention to the three agenda bills that we have in your packet, and they're all related to one another. And before we get started on our information-only presentation, I just wanted to bring the other two items into context. So as you just heard, the community is definitely calling us to action on this issue. I do want to, today we're talking about a shelter, and, and that's just one specific action, but you know that the city is working on a number of different ways to address homelessness in our community, and that's through providing services, case management services, permanent housing, supportive services housing. And so just keep that in mind, and I, I know you all know that, but when we're having these conversations out in the community, sometimes all the other things that the city is doing and our community as a whole is doing gets lost. So first, we're going to provide that, that overview. I don't think all of you have met the director of the Lighthouse Mission, and so we wanted to make sure Hans had a chance to come in and provide you with some kind of context. How are they operating now? What do they do? And if this new shelter is built, or when this new shelter is built, how do they plan to operate that? Rick Sepler, though, is going to start by giving you kind of the background, why are we bringing you this particular partner, and why are we bringing you this particular site? And then I'll provide an overview of the letter of intent that has been signed by the mayor. the mayor and Hans, and that's a non-binding agreement. And all, all of those actions are going to require your future action on. The mayor's also going to provide you with an update on the option that the port has on, on that piece of property, and bring you up to date. So, that will all happen in the first item. The second item is, we have several tenants on our site, and we've had kind of an informal agreement with the Port of Bellingham. The Port of Bellingham has been managing that property for the city for the last few years. And regardless of, of moving forward with a shelter or not, the city has decided the mayor would like to manage that property directly. And so, that notice has gone out to the port, and so, today, we're simply asking you to authorize the staff to enter into direct lease negotiations, or actually agreements with our tenants. And then, the third action, we are asking for the council just to provide direction to the staff, so that we can begin negotiating a lease agreement with the Lighthouse Mission. This is not your execution, there's been a little bit of a misunderstanding about this. Our code requires a two-step process for you when we lease property under this circumstance. We have some exemptions like the parcade, but our code requires that you authorize us to negotiate, and then a later action where you would, where you would take action on that lease agreement. So, just want you to know, that's not what we're asking you to do. We're just asking to begin those kind of formal conversations. There's a number of agreements that I'll go through that have to be drafted and brought back for your action. So, I'm going to turn that, it over to Rick Sepler for some background.
Councilmembers, we have discussed before the urgency of the situation. As you are aware, on any given day, about 700 folks are homeless in our community. That was identified in the 2016 point-in-time count. Of those 700 or so, about half are sheltered through a variety of safety net services, temporary places to live, staying with friends or other means, but they find some way of accommodating a shelter. The other half are unsheltered, and we find them in various locations in our community. Of that group, we face one of the most significant challenges, and that is the hard-to-serve. About 300 folks are the hardest for us to serve with the existing safety net and have limited resources. And in looking at that, it is a high priority for us to address that population. You might say, what's the cause and effect there? Why do you focus that effort? And the effort is, we have been continually concerned with camps in our undeveloped areas, in our parks, along our trails, with folks who sleep in doorways, on sidewalks, vacant areas, parked cars, other circumstances in the community. And we feel that that's a population that, given the right opportunity, can be addressed, and finding the right service to provide it can address it in a timely manner. In doing that, it would allow us to help extinguish some of the adverse uses we have. Right now, if you go to a camp and you clean it up and you say you need to move on, other than the temporary shelter our partners, Lighthouse Mission, have established, there's no place to send folks, and certainly no place to send folks with the range of services necessary to break that cycle. That priority is, is key, because it is appropriate for us to have public spaces, and it is appropriate for us to have folks have access to services. In that aspect of asking folks to move on, to direct them to where services are, we are fully aware that half of the population we speak with will choose not to go to those services. That's based on experience in other jurisdictions. But, I want to focus on the fact that half will, and that's the starting point to enter into a long-term effort, one would hope, perhaps short-term in some cases, to change circumstance. In doing this, we're pleased to work with Lighthouse Mission. Lighthouse Mission, early on, has identified the need in our community, and for over 90 years, have provided services, and specifically to this target population. And they came to the conclusion, about the same time the city came to the conclusion, that there was a need for a low-barrier, easy-access shelter. One that would not exclude folks for things that, in prior shelter circumstances, had excluded them. To allow folks to come in when they're couples, to allow folks to come in with pets, to allow folks to bring their, their belongings with them. To allow folks to come in had they used drugs or alcohol, provided they could follow basic safety rules, you know, without testing. That would meet our need, that would provide a point of entry, and that could be a place where other services can be brought to bear. In doing this, we found a willing partner who saw that need, but we needed to find a site. And we engaged for the last 18 months to look at a variety of locations to try to establish this facility. We looked at all of the city and port-owned properties, we looked at all of the school district properties, we looked at all the state and the county properties. Is there anything vacant? Is there anything that could be located that we could build on or reuse? We hired a commercial broker and said, look citywide, and see if you could find any location that could meet our basic program needs. 10,000 square feet in outside area, on a major bus route, close proximity to our commercial downtown, where, where we found that there's a correlation between the location of a facility like this and the downtown area for success. Folks are less inclined to go further afield, certainly not at the point of initial entry. They might be, as they enter into some program for recovery, they might be more inclined further down the road, to go a little further out from the city itself. We had some promising outcomes, looking at, potential outcomes, looking at the airport. But, as you're aware, the FAA considers transient housing residential housing, and wouldn't allow it within the airport proximity. In addition to that, it became very clear that it would be hard logistically for our partner, and it would be hard to attract folks to attend and use a facility that was remotely located. We came to a conclusion, the closer to downtown was better, that locating it, as you know, our comp plan provides clear guidance, away from residential areas, preferably in light industrial areas, and in commercial areas on a case-by-case basis, but conditionally. And that responds to sort of the unique nature of the population and use of a easy-access shelter. We did come to a number of conclusions, and I'll share them with you. The first is, there will be conflicts with this use with whatever location we find. Okay? There is no location that would be free from concern from either a nearby population or other populations. Some groups have suggested that this is fairly simple to decide, serve, and solve. Some have suggested there's an Albertson's in Birchwood, we could just use that. Some had said, perhaps we can use the old Costco building and put it there, or the Muni Court next to the middle school. I, I think you see the trend of problems with finding a site. In looking at this, staff assessed the city assets, we found a parcel that meets our zoning criteria, that is permitted by our zoning. And consistent with the requirements of municipal code, staff has concluded that this city-owned parcel is the best site for this use, absent any other site being more aware of. And we come before you with that site in mind, and we acknowledge that there are a number of challenges. When you look at the best use, we have to weigh the relative priorities, and ultimately, you have to weigh the relative priorities. We value the marine trades, strongly value it. Our comp plan is, is quite elegant about how that provides family wage jobs, it's a fragile industry, and we don't want to disrupt it. But, we also have to find a site that could potentially work to solve this issue. What I'd like to do is, I'd like to introduce Hans Erchinger Davis, who could tell you more about the program that we're hoping to partner with and establish at the site.
Greetings, councilmembers. Yes, my name is Hans Erchinger Davis. I have that long last name, so my kids sound like little law firms. So, like Rick said, I'm a new executive director, but I've been working at the mission the last 10 years. I started out there as a chaplain, and this leveraged my way up to be the new director since July. And not long after that, we expanded our drop-in center to be able to accommodate 80 people to sleep. I had to look my staff in the eyes as they were turning people away dozens a night because we were at capacity. And we thought, after talking with the city about possible new solutions, we thought, maybe we could just expand this drop-in center to, to operate 24 hours a day instead of just the afternoons. Now, this drop-in center is in addition to the other programs we have. We have three other facilities, there are 24-hour facilities, offering different types of programming, trying to meet people where they're at, and their levels of motivation and stages of recovery that they're in. The drop-in center, though, expanding like it did, was also for us a trial run programmatically to see, is this something that will work if we were to get a new site? Interestingly, it filled up pretty quick, those 80 beds. Now, those are 80 people we would have turned away otherwise each night, because we would be at capacity. And talk about good timing, being that we had the coldest winter in 36 years, that we were able to accommodate all those folks. Now, about 10 times, though, we actually hit capacity, even in that drop-in center. So, that's 80 men that go in the drop-in center, we put the women in our chapel, on the chapel floor. So, 120. So, we hit capacity, I think the most is around 128. And we partnered with a nearby church to, we put the women in the nearby church, and then expanded our men into our chapel to, to accommodate. But, it was surprising to me how significant the need was. I didn't realize it was that much, that that many people would actually be accessing these services. So, it's an interim solution. The building itself is not sufficient for sleeping people on a sort of regular basis. This is an emergency thing, why we're doing it. It doesn't have a sprinkler system, it's not earthquake-safe, it only has a couple bathrooms. It's not the most ideal place, but we're making the best of it, as, as we are. So, what does easy access mean? It means that you can get in the door with minimal barriers. You can get in the door, you don't have to be totally clean and sober to come in the door, as long as you're behaving in a safe way. So, it's behavior-based is, is how you get in the doors. Another shift that we did with this was, before we allowed service animals, we didn't allow pets. Now, we're allowing pets. The pets can be there, they have to follow the same kind of rules like a service animal would, but that's actually a nice barrier to remove, and something I've always wanted to do. And, and now, we're able to do that, which is great, because, as you know, many people, their sole companion is their pet, and that would be a reason they wouldn't come in our Other things are things like, we don't require people to have ID to get in the doors, whereas our other programs do require that. I should say, too, our other programs do have strict sobriety rules. We do urinalysis and breathalyzers, because we find that's very helpful for people to maintain their sobriety. But, we also recognize that people are at different stages of motivation, and the goal is to get them in the doors, to get them stabilized, assessed, and then taking the next steps necessary to begin to address the reasons that are driving their homelessness. So, our big goal is to get them deeper into our programming, once they come in our doors. The new shelter, once it comes online, will be, will have that same kind of intention about it. The, not just our programs, though, we're going to open it up to other housing service programs to be able to, for people to move forward into potentially permanent housing and things like that, and bypassing our other services. One of the things that we've been doing all along, though, that we really appreciate, and we anticipate doing in a new shelter as well, is encouraging other agencies to access our population there, on-site. So, for example, we have Law Advocates comes down, helps with legal help. The PATH program comes down and helps out with mental health issues. We have a medical clinic, CIMAR provides us a medical clinic once a week. We have an eye clinic for people to get glasses once a week. We have all sorts of different sorts of agencies that make their way down to the mission to access the population, because truly, the drop-in center currently is the hub for anything to do with homelessness in this town. The new shelter, what we're looking at is, at this site anyways, that we're looking at, is 11,000 square feet. It will be able to serve up to 200 people. Our hope is that we don't have to get beyond that, 200 people. One of the things, we were just speaking with the police department here recently about the planning, and once we get to the stage, we're actually really planning this out with the architects and design. The police offered to help out, which is great when it comes to what they call crime prevention through urban design, where you can really make sure it's a safe environment, safe context, as well as really ensuring that the surrounding neighborhoods are safe as well, and having protocols in place that, that really help make that a reality. The site that, that, as we were talking, is partners with the city. The site for us, we really want it to be in a light industrial zone kind of space, where you don't have retail stores nearby, that when you have people hanging out in front of the mission, or in front of currently our drop-in center, which is right on the sidewalk, that can be scary for folks that are going to go shopping. The reality is, it's actually quite a safe place, in fact, probably more safe than anywhere else, because you have staff supervision 24 hours a day going on there. It's still scary when you don't know, understand somebody, that look, you know, they're maybe exhibiting severe mental illness, different things, it can be scary. If you can get those folks off the street, that's a really helpful thing for creating a perception of community safety. That's something that this one site that we're looking at is incredibly ideal for, because the building itself is set off-road a fair bit. The parking lot is set down from the road, I think, kind of like a sunken living room, probably six feet or so. You can easily put up a vegetative barrier or something like that to block the ability to see people from the street, and you can also create a park-like environment that's going to attract folks to the area. I should say, that's pretty critical when it comes to working with people that are chronically homeless. You have to create a space they're going to be attracted to, and it's easy to get to. It's different for folks that are at higher levels of recovery. For example, we have a women's shelter that's more kind of transitional. That wouldn't necessarily need to be in the downtown core. Where we have a recovery program, addiction recovery program, it's a year-long recovery program, that doesn't necessarily have to be in the downtown core. It's certainly ideal for our operations, for efficiencies and things like that, but it's not critical. Whereas, you do have to have something that's close to the people. And traditionally, in any city, you come across, the homeless are going to concentrate in the downtown, so that's where you want to be if you're to be providing people services or that, that next step out of their, their homelessness. Some of the other things that are advantages to being close by to us is the extra security that's allowed, since we have staff, 24-hour staff in the other facilities as well, they can get there quick if, if something comes up and there's a security issue. Allows for easier management from the administration on, on making sure things are running well, and then just, yeah, the efficiencies of, of being able to, you know, if, if the laundry services went down in that facility, we could use the laundry services at a nearby, our nearby facility, and, and cart them back and forth, or truck them back and forth, and be really, really easy to do. The, the goal, though, is truly to address this issue. And, you know, we, we're working with about 30% of the homeless population on any one day, the mission is. So, we're averaging about 210 people a night, which is about 30% of the 719, I believe, the last point-in-time count was. That's quite a few people that we're, that we're working with already. I would have to triple my budget to accommodate them all. I can't do that. We're privately funded. I'm fundraising like crazy, trying to, to raise the money that it takes to operate this shelter, and we operate on about $2 million budget annually. That's why I want to partner, partner like nobody's business. Right? Because the more I can leverage the good stuff that's going on at the mission, the more peoples that we can reach and, and really give a chance, a fighting chance at life. That's, that's currently what the drop-in center is up to.
Thank you, Hans. We're so appreciative of the work that, that they're doing, and I, I reported to you a couple weeks ago that the mission, on their own accord, has, has transitioned that drop-in to center, added $200,000 a year to their budget to take that on without really, well, they haven't asked for, for any city money. So, we're very thankful, and I also wanted to mention that this has been a priority for the mayor. She's been quite vocal about it for a number of years. And while we have a lot of other nonprofits in our community, this is the only provider that came forward to assist the city in this particular endeavor. If, if you're wondering, are there others that want to run this emergency night shelter? This is, is the only agency that we've found that wants to... This is the only agency that we've found that wants to step up to the plate. So, for this piece, we have other partners that are doing other critical pieces as well. So, I'm going to provide a little overview of the letter of intent. This is a non-binding agreement.
Just a minute, please. Councilmember Murphy?
Just wanted to say, you let us know that one of the ways that we could help is by getting the word out that the Lighthouse Mission could use financial support, and I have been doing everything I can to express that to our community and how far the dollars will go.
Great. Okay, so, the letter of intent, this is a non-binding agreement, but we needed to get something kind of formalized between our partners so that we could take the next step and go public with this proposed partnership. There's three legal transactions that are going to require your approval at a later date. That later date, we're kind of anticipating in May of this year. And the reason why May is because we need a little time to put these documents together. But the Lighthouse Mission, more importantly, they need to know that we are partners so that they can launch a major capital campaign. I'll come back to you in a minute to talk about the significant lift that they're stepping up to make. And that'll, that'll be 12 months, so we're hoping that we can open the shelter in the winter of 2018. And so, we're going to miss another winter, but we don't want to delay, we don't want to prolong this, these decisions, because it takes, it's going to take us a long time to get that capital together, to get our building permitted and then constructed. So, that's sort of the timeline. So, first, we're recommending that we enter into a long-term land lease with the Lighthouse Mission, so we own the property. We would lease that property out for what we're going to be recommending to you would be a dollar per year, due to the clear public benefit that this will achieve. The property is 54,000 square feet. They will operate 24/7, easy access or low barrier shelter on that property. Any change in those use, that use would require our approval, so hopefully someday, we might not need 200 beds. And by the way, I don't know if any of us have mentioned, this proposed site would provide for 200 people to sleep at. It would have shower facilities. There are no current shower facilities at the drop-in center. It would have a kitchen area and a place for services, and meeting rooms and exam rooms and things like that. The term would be for 75 years, and the mission would not be able to sign that without our consent. Before executing into that lease, we recognize a number of things we need to line up our other agreements, our services agreement and our purchase and sale for the buildings, and that also the Port of Bellingham would need to relinquish its option to purchase the property. I'll turn it over to the mayor to provide an update on that.
Well, first of all, I got to thank the city team, and obviously, our partner with the Lighthouse Mission, and working with the port director, Rob Fixx, on trying to explore this for the last 18 months. We have looked for suitable property, I think Rick has mentioned, and the reason that we are looking at the property that is before you today is because we could find no other property that met our criteria, which is light industrial zone, over 10,000 square feet with additional room for outdoor area, so kind of give people a place to be, near the Lighthouse Mission, and then also outside of the commercial retail area and away from residential, because we already know from our other looks that that'd be much more difficult to cite than in the light industrial area. I went in front of the port for about an hour the other night and answered questions from the port commissioners, and listened to an hour, before that, an hour of testimony from tenants down at the waterfront, who of course are very concerned and upset, really, about us taking this acre, acre and a quarter area out of the 240 acres that are designated for Maritime Industries, worried about the erosion. I mean, they're worried if this is the first one, then what will be the second one? Well, first of all, this is the only one we own, so we are not going to be putting anything else down in that area, and the commissioners that they have now are quite committed to marine trades industries, as am I. And also, the agreement talks about the light industrial we're having on the waterfront side of the Wacom Waterway, that was originally had other purposes intended on it, and we fought for light industrial, for the jobs, and then also the marine trades industry. So, so, there is, within that area, a lot of opposition, a lot of opposition, and I completely understand. I've tried to be very sympathetic about it, because I know. But as a daughter of a fisherman and a fish processing plant owner, I also wear another hat as the mayor, which is my social services hat. And this is a problem that I believe has been on the top of my radar screen for the five years that I've been here. And this is the closest we've gotten to getting a decision based on a location that potentially could give relief to another 200 people in our, in our community who are not housed. So, I'm, I'm very committed to this. Having said that, at the end of the meeting at the port, Bobby Briscoe asked me if I'd be willing to sell the property. And I don't think you heard my whole, everything I said about this, but the first thing I said was, well, you have the first option to buy. But he, and then Dave Robin, Dan Robin said, but what will happen if, if we buy the property? And I said, we don't have another solution. So, I am not willing to sell this property to the port unless there is another solution for where the shelter could be, because right now, we have, we have a solution. We're going into executive session to give you more information about that. And I think that it's, it meets all the criteria for what we, what we need in a shelter. We are extremely supportive of our tenants, because they're Maritime Industries, we don't want anything to happen to them, and we are renegotiating the amount they pay for rent on that site to reflect what the city has been receiving from the other management company that was managing that site for us. I've told, we don't have, you know, a long time to figure this out, and I've told the port director this morning that we need a decision made before the end of May. And, oh, I'm sorry, before the end of April. I just took three days off, before the end of April, because of the paperwork that needs to be done. So, he, I know he is actively looking for other sites. I am keeping my mind open about other sites. The problem is, we have two partners on this. We have the Lighthouse Mission and the city, and we both have needs about location. And then, secondly, we have the other, the other considerations about commercial retail and residential that I don't think we can do. Now, we've had quite a bit of housing on Holly Street. I believe that it is not a good idea, as we start implementing our Old Town Urban Village Plan, to put more homeless shelter-type housing on Holly Street. We have three, actual three projects that are in the works for residential, potential residential, right now, which is the most we've had since I've been the mayor, and some other commercial development where people have actually bought property and are in for permits. So, there's a lot of exciting things to talk about, about the waterfront and the Old Town redevelopment. So, with that, I don't know what else to say, except I wanted to make it very clear that I did not, I did not make a promise just to sell the property. I think maybe some of you have heard from commission members, it was with the caveat that they have an alternative, so.
Okay, Tara, quickly, you have some more to finish up?
Sorry, just two more points. I kind of stopped at the lease, but I did want to mention that there's other parts to this partnership. The city would sell the buildings to the Lighthouse Mission, and the Lighthouse Mission would do all of the capital costs, about a million and a half dollar upgrade to the site and the buildings, and they would take that on themselves. That's part of that capital campaign. That's a significant lift for them to make, and we are grateful for that. And then, the third item would be that the city would enter into, and this is part of that partnership that Hans is calling for, a longer-term services agreement, a 12-year commitment, that the city would provide $180,000 a year to help operate the facility. The facility is estimated at over $400,000, closer to $500,000 per year to operate it. So, we would be partially funding that, and what we're considering our, our investment in is the night shelter piece, from check-in to checkout, or, you know, wake up in the morning. So, again, with all of those, those legal transactions require your approval, and we're estimating, we're hoping to be here, back to you, in May of this year.
Okay, so, I would like to, the council, I'm sure, is going to want to discuss this. There are, as you say, three items, and I kind of want to move them along. This first item is for information-
Michael, just a point of order on this, because there were a couple contradictory things, or a couple things that were thrown out, and I don't know what I, and I heard there's going to be an executive session on, I don't know, not on this.
Well, it's not about buying, it's another, it's just part of the discussion about this project.
Okay.
Right, so, we have, this item is information only, and information only indicates that there are three components. The first of those components is a land lease, and negotiating that land lease is the third agenda item. So, I think we're going to want to, we are going to want to discuss this. This is information only. We can move to the next one, and I think all the discussion really should center around that land lease negotiation.
Could I ask the question before it's forgotten about these two? Because one, Tara said, we can't move forward with a lease until the port backs out of their, relinquishes their right to buy. And the mayor said, I'm not going to sell. And so, I just-
Unless that's an option.
Unless they're, yeah.
And that's part of the executive session, by accident.
Okay, well, that's why I'm, okay, that's why I was wondering what I can ask on that question, because that's, because those, that question bears on these next two items, in terms of us making any decisions or moving things on. Okay, just, just wanted to get that out there.
Yeah, no, I do want to get-
Is what we could, you could be a last.
The attorney is going to say something now.
I just want to point out, I just want to reiterate, that might help you think about this, Teri, that what we're here before you today, we have three items, as Michael mentioned, and the first one, we've just basically done, which was to go over the letter of intent and kind of the general background. The next two require action, but they're not, the lease to the Lighthouse Mission doesn't require final action. This action that we're asking for today is just the first step to move us towards figuring out how, well, it's, it's directing us to negotiate, and so, that, that's the action, so it's not a final action on the lease. I just want to make sure you understood that.
Okay.
Hey, Roxanne?
I just have another question about 21565. So, it's the second, so, it says, provide direction, but you're asking us if we want to authorize or not, right?
That's the third agenda item?
Yeah, the third agenda item.
She's telling you the third agenda item already.
Well, I'm trying to create a point of order and clarity, because what I heard you say is, you're going to ask us if we want you to, if you want us to authorize this. But providing direction is different than voting on the authorization. So, do you want us to vote to approve? Or do you just want us to provide direction?
You will need to make a motion, and the motion is included in your recommended motion.
But that's not provide direction. So, I'm just trying to say, in future times, when we do this-
Yes, okay, so, the motion, the motion of what you're going to be asked to, to pass, to vote on, is to direct the city staff to negotiate. So, yes, thank you for that clarification. And I think what we should do is probably move now to the next item, so that we can, we could discuss them either globally or one by one.
That was for information only. The next item is proposed lease of city property, 801 and 807 Roderick Avenue. This is not a lease to the Lighthouse Mission. This is simply the city assuming supervised responsibilities for the leases to the current existing tenants. So, step one is just, we're just going to assume direct control over the leases, the current leases, the current leases will continue there. The proposal is for new 14-month leases for the current tenants. That's the proposal. Is there anything else? And this, it actually is, you're seeking a direction to approve these, the, these lease arrangements. Is that correct?
Correct. They have been leasing month-to-month. So, we, we've had month-to-month leases, the port with Colony Wharf. We've, we've given the port notice, and so, these, these leases are due at the end of this week. So, we do need to get direction to enter direct lease agreements with our tenants.
Actually, we need a vote, and when we need, and we need two-
I move to approve the proposed lease of city property at 801 and 807 Roderick Avenue.
Second. We have a motion, a second. This is to approve new 14-month leases with five existing tenants on this city-owned property. Any further discussion? Dan, and then April.
What does the current lease cost for that, for 801 through 807, to the tenants?
Our tenants have been paying Colony Wharf about $5,000 a month, but we're going to enter into lease agreements with our tenants for $592 per month, which is what we've been receiving from the property for the last few years.
They would receive a-
They're going, yes.
A benefit.
They are receiving a benefit, due to the short term, although 14 months is longer term than what they have been receiving.
So, my, my concern in hearing the pushback and, and hearing some of what some other port commissioners are insinuating, if we make this, and then port then politically pushes back really hard and says, and we want to buy it, and we want to buy it now, we're already into this lease agreement and giving this, these monies for 14 months? Can we, we can't change this lease agreement, then?
We don't, we don't want to. We, we think this is fair to our tenants.
Well, we're doing it fairly, because my understanding is, they're going to be displaced, and then this, this is quite a sum of money that they would be keeping in their pocket to hopefully help with those displacement costs, take some pressures off as they're going through that. But if we ultimately aren't able to take the property, because the port makes a different decision, we're still in this for this amount of money.
Tara, do you want to? So, the lease agreements have not yet, obviously, been developed or signed, because we're here before you to get that vote, and we would anticipate that in the lease agreement, we would have a term that would reflect a different rate, should the shelter not be proposed, or approved, sorry.
That's what I needed, thank you.
Teri?
And related to that, since we're dropping the price that much on it, we don't have, we're all, we are clear of public gifting, because there, you know, I just want to make sure that-
So, the city has been, just, the first thing to note is that the city's been receiving the same amount that we're going to continue to receive. There was a manager in between the layers that was receiving that extra amount.
Yeah, okay.
And in addition to that, if the shelter project goes forward, the tenants are going to have to have various folks coming on their property for all of the due diligence that needs to be done, and so, this is a fair price for what they will be experiencing during this time, because of the due diligence, in addition to the fact that it's a fairly short-term lease.
Dan?
I was at the port meeting last week, where the mayor presented on this topic, and, Mayor, I don't remember if it was you or Mr. Fixx from the port that indicated that the port would provide relocation services, but would help, would assist those current tenants to, to identify other properties within the port's purview to relocate. Some of those businesses are water-dependent. How does that work? How do, how do they have assurances that they will find suitable places to rent for their businesses?
Well, when I've talked to the port director, it's been under the, under the assumption- When I've talked to the port director, it's been under the, under the assumption and agreement that it has to be a relocation that would work for them. So if they're water-dependent, it would have to be, allow them to be water-dependent still. If they can be at an office, which one of them can be, then maybe there's office space for them to go in. So it's all, it isn't like any place. It's like an appropriate place for them to continue to do their business.
Dan?
Is it your understanding that, that that's, that it's likely that, that these tenants will find homes within the port property, or is it going to be a challenge, or what's that look like?
From the very beginning, I have heard that it is likely that they would be able to find different homes on the port property. Is it 100% guaranteed today? I don't think so. But yes. Because there's, well, it's, I wish it was easier, but the port has offered to relocate other people too. So, so if they find another site that they think might be better than the site that we've identified, they've already said that they would relocate those, those businesses on port property. So, and we just talked to the port director this morning.
So to reiterate the motion, this is a motion to authorize the entering of lease agreements to take over direct control of the tenants on the property of, for the proposed 14-month lease period. As I see it, we're just taking over the property, the tenants are getting a short-term benefit. The long-term question has not been answered, but I, I think we should take over control regardless of what the ultimate outcome is. That's my personal feeling. Is there any further discussion on this motion to approve lease agreements for the city property 801 and 807 Roder Avenue? All those in favor approving the leases, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. So the final item is related to that. It is an authorization to negotiate a lease of the property, the same property you just talked about, but now a different lease with a different tenant for the same property. And this time, the proposed tenant would be the Lighthouse Mission Ministries, as we just talked about. So this really is a step to beginning the negotiation. If we do convert who the tenant is, we have to first negotiate what the arrangement would be with that tenant for the land lease portion. Roxanne?
I just moved to authorize staff to enter into negotiations with the Lighthouse Mission for a below-market lease of property located at 801 and 807 Roder Avenue for use of an easy-access shelter.
I'll second for discussion.
We have a motion on the table. Teri?
Yeah. I would like to move that we table a decision on this until tonight, till such time we can have our executive session, since we're going to receive information pertinent to the decisions. Because we're not getting all the information yet, and then we can make a decision tonight. So I would like to postpone that, us making that decision until the night when we've heard what-
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion to simply postpone further discussion and decision on this one question until this evening. Is there any objection to that motion to postpone? Seeing no objection, I'm going to go ahead and consider that a passed motion, so we will continue this discussion tonight. Thank you.
Can I make a suggestion that we forego the next presentation until next meeting? We've got 30 minutes of executive-
Mr. Nabafeld is here. We are running long, so we have one last item, full agenda item for the committee, the whole, few more, you know, ministerial things, and then we still have an executive session for 30 minutes. How do people feel about voting that? Is there any objection? Mr. Sepple?
We'd welcome the opportunity to return at another day.
Thanks, Rick. I'm going to, I'm going to suggest that Mr. Nabafeld will get a better hearing in two weeks. Okay, so, folks, item number nine on the, on the committee, the whole presentation of a work program of Development Services Division, that is being postponed to a later meeting. We now move on to approval of city, of committee meeting minutes. I believe we have one set of minutes from March 13th.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion a second. Any corrections or changes to the minutes? Okay, all those in favor approving the minutes from March 13, committee meeting minutes from March 13, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Anything under old or new business? Teri?
Yeah, just a, a quick, wanted to give the council just a quick update. A while back, council, it was for the council about a project from the Sikh community about proposal to build an arch of reconciliation and healing. And I've been doing some work with them, and I just wanted to give the council an update that that, it's expanded a little bit from just the plaque and recognition of the Sikh community to reach, to outreach to the Chinese community and the Japanese community around that, so that they're moving forward with, starting, they've been to the, to planning, to parks and to the Arts Commission with their design, and they're finalizing that part. They've got stuff going into planning and, and that project is, is moving for, is moving forward at this point, but it has been expanded to include those three with plaques talking about the expulsion of also the Chinese and the Japanese during the World War II. And so it is moving forward. Just wanted to give yous an update on some positive things going on in the-
Anything under old, else in order?
Just real quick, there's been a lot of emails coming forward to us, and I'd like to make a motion that we look into the possibility of a do not feed the deer ordinance. We have been looking at a lot of emails, and I would like to make a motion that we direct Mark to investigate that for us and bring us back. And the legal department are possible, actually making it a, making a misdemeanor to feed, feed deer within our-
And this is also be referred to a committee or something?
Yeah.
Second.
Say, we have a motion before us to assign our policy analyst to also work with the administration, to look into the issue of prohibition against intentional deer feeding of wild deer in the city limits. As you say, Jean, there's been some complaints about this. We've had a lot of talk about this, and that would come forward at a later date to the committee planning?
Maybe public, public safety, it's a safety issue. Teri loves all this stuff on the side.
Committee to be determined. So any further discussion?
As long as we can expand it to include feeding the raccoons along with-
You could, yeah.
Discussion on the motion?
I, I think that would, I've gotten emails that are not just about the deer.
That's fine. We can expand it.
I know birds in there, but I think we should probably start very broad and then come down. And then, of course, I mean, this is kind of like the no smoking on trails, that this isn't something we're looking at a severe enforcement of, just to give people a little bit of something to tell their neighbors if they're having a problem.
That's fine.
Okay, any further discussion on this? Administration? Kelly?
No, I have one.
Okay, so all those in favor of referring this issue to our policy analyst and the administration for a future, bring forward at a future date, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. I think, did you, was that your item, or, and then we'll get to you, Kelly.
Okay. So I just wanted to address something that I, I myself personally care about, but also I've been receiving a lot of public comment, and that is the amount of litter that is strewn throughout the city, but particularly on our entrances and our exits to our freeways. And I just wanted to let everyone know that we have been talking with Public Works about how to solve this. This is DOT's responsibility. It is not a priority for them at this point. They have other things that are on their agenda. So how we're going to address this as a community is something that we are looking into, whether we can get work, workers to do this for us, or whether it's going to be community volunteering, or however we're going to do it. I just want people to know that we are looking at how to address this issue around litter, particularly going on and off of our freeways, and that this is important to us, and we do recognize that this is a reflection of our city, and we are looking for solutions. So as soon as we find some ideas and solutions, we will bring those forward.
Thank you, Pinky. Anything else under old and new business from the council? Kelly, you had something?
Just briefly. As you know, there's been a federal budget released that could have severe ramifications on community development, housing, community development grants, mental health, a lot of different things. We are going to be drafting a letter to our federal delegation to give them some insight into how this might affect us. And I'd be happy to do that with Mike, have Michael sign it for the council too, so we can bring you a, bring you a draft.
And this draft to basically identify the, the local impacts of these proposed changes?
Yes.
That sounds great to everyone up here.
Put on the heading, your budget is dead on arrival. It's just a simple.
Well, it's, I think it's, it's good for elected officials, as you know, to have some examples of what it means locally, and that's what we want to give them.
Information to go and back up. Okay, anything else under old and new business? Okay, we will now move into executive session. We have three items. First item is potential property acquisition. Second item is also potential property acquisition. And the third item is potential litigation, approximately 30 minutes. I'm going to say I'll be back here right before 5:00.